Welcome to everybody, thank you for coming to the meeting tonight, we're glad you're here. So if anything please let us know, Deputy Trammell back there, no need to laugh or walk in over there, we'll be late. But well, we'll call the meeting to order and this is our regular monthly meeting for February. Gentlemen, do we have any announcements anyone needs to make at this time? Time manager? Ron?
Yes.
Okay. No announcements, but we do have a recognition we'll make tonight. We had talked about this as a board, I guess some time back, some months ago, and about the contributions of J.C. Jacobs and Frankie Jacobs to this community and to this county. And we thought it might be appropriate to do that after the first year when their business on Main Street, I think J.C. been there fifty, fifty-some years, Janet, how long?
Fifty-five in that.
Fifty-five years.
Six to six in the twin shop.
But not only have Jacobs, can you say, well, you recognize this one, you have to recognize the next one, but when you serve your business community for fifty-five consecutive years, you serve on the school board, Mr. Jacobs, now that, I know that's an easy job, and Jacobs across the street in your stores and serving the people of this community, they'll tell them how many things that you've given and helped with, how many Little League projects you've helped with, how many bake sales you've given to, it would be in the thousands, and I don't think we can say enough. About, so I'm gonna give each one, remember, just to make to say whatever you'd like to, and if you don't want to, that's okay, I'll get you on the spot, but if you'd like to say a word to Jacobs, we have a little presentation to make to you, Ron.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to. I remember as a kid before Kmart, Walmart, Sky City, and Dollar General and all that that come to town, everybody come up to your store and bought clothes, and I remember when I was in the first grade, I'd like to be able to buy a pair of pants, what does that cost back then, I think it was a dollar and a quarter, I don't know the game for a pair. But anyway, I know through the years since, I've been in there and bought suits right up to get the clothes to door, and I thank you very much, now where we gonna get that floor shoes and shoes at? Ronnie Beal here, I know too.
I'm more interested in the 4XL.
But, uh...
Thank you very much. But the Jacobs family has been a blessing to this community in a lot of ways. As a kid in the fifth grade, I remember well, we had a tragedy in our family and our car burned up in the Big Daughter Park lot, we had just left Peoples and bought all new clothes. Well, guess what J.C. Jacobs did, he gave us all new clothes. So you never forget those things, Mr. Jacobs, and it's not only my family, but I think you touch the majority of the families in this county, you and your family, and it's appreciated and will never be forgotten, so we appreciate that.
I can remember as a Little Leaguer growing up, I have Peoples tattooed across my chest or my back then, and just a random thought, I was watching ESPN, little i30 the other night, and it was on Bo Jackson. I can remember very well as a kid going into Peoples and being enamored by a poster of Bo Jackson on the wall in there, when I saw that on ESPN the other night, my mind went right to him. Thank you for being an icon of my life. Go ahead.
Mr. V. Jacobs, it's good to see both of you up and healthy and looking good, and contributed tremendously to this community, all of us grew up here, it was a treat to go into Peoples and then to be able to ride right next door five and dime to Perry Drug Store. Those days are gone, but it's still good to see y'all, and we wish you the best and hope everything works out well for y'all. You do hard work, don't hurt anybody, both of you.
Now, we've got a little presentation, maybe let me come down there and begin. This is Macon County Community Service Award to J.C. Jacobs and Frankie Jacobs, in grateful appreciation for a lifetime of commitment, visionary leadership, community support, and dedicated service to the people of Macon County by the Macon County Board of Commissioners on this day. So God bless you guys, we love you, come up here, let me get you. I think you wanna get your picture back up just a little bit. You guys, you just stand there, we'll get everybody in. Janet, their daughter Janet, well she, she and I served on the school board together for I guess four years, Janet, back to the day when we started this process of building schools and trying to get rid of all these mobile units, and the last bit of brick was built, and kids are in the school this year, no kids are in the, for example, she was very much part of that, their daughter also served a four-year term in this one, as a county commissioner.
Well, we didn't have this nice layout when I was on.
Oh, that's right. And you had to walk the school up, you know, both of you.
Yeah, it's all...
Anyway, you guys are welcome to stay for an incredibly long agenda, you're welcome to stay.
I think we're gonna slip out, but thank you so much.
It's only sixty pages long, if you'd like to stay, but if you'd like to go, then we'll thank you for your time and we'll excuse you guys.
Thank you so much.
The same to Jacobs. As Jacobs will leave, let's all stand and we'll observe the signs to compare Harps and Minds of the Mid Business. Thank you, I'm gonna ask Paul Higginson if you would, to lead us and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to his wife, another statesman American, and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a public hearing scheduled, the purpose for this, the county, for those of you that don't know, when I first got on the board, I had educated myself about this, the county has an ordinance, and in that ordinance, the naming of these roads, David has supposed for nine-one-one purposes, every road with more than three or more residents has to be named, so there's always new, new roads that have come to the board, and gentlemen, you've got a list of that, those road names, I will not read those, I think there's about ten, ten or twelve of those, so anyway, we'll, we'll recognize, I think Angie, is that right?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna have her address that, and then we'll take any other comments. Angie, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. These road names, the proposed road names that is here have been posted, and the hearing has been advertised as per North Carolina general statutes. We have made some changes to the ranges on five of those roads, but we are still within the scope of our authority to read those sections, so we propose that you accept the names as proposed.
Gentlemen, you do have a proposed amendment to your road naming and numbering the ordinance in your package, we are of course in a public hearing at this point in time, that proposed amendment has attached to it today which lists the various road names and the revised number range, and at the appropriate time, we would be asking for your consideration to adopt that amendment.
We would do that after we put it in.
Yeah, I think at this particular point in time, we just need to have it presented and open it up to the question to the general public, if anybody has anything they'd like to say now, please.
Okay.
And assuming you can get through that part, then we have to pull you for the proposal.
Okay. We did not have anyone sign up, Mr. Attorney, for the public hearing to speak, is there anyone that's here that did not get the opportunity to sign up that would like to speak at this public hearing concerning the nine-one-one, the road, road names, assigning a range of road names? Okay, hearing none?
We can close this.
Move to close this.
We can hear you. You'd like to hear you close?
I just got one question for you, Mr. Attorney.
Okay.
Angie, how many different roads do we have named in the county, do you know?
There's about four thousand.
I know the law, and I don't know how many it's been.
I can make you this with our directions.
Thank you, Angie. I just knew there were a lot, I didn't have no clue how many.
Are these all new roads?
Yes, they are.
Are these all new roads? Angie has her hands full, but I want to tell you, she's on top of it and does county good job here.
Angie, thank you for doing a good job, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Angie.
Chester, what would the, what would the motion need to be to accept the resolution?
Actually, it's a proposed amendment to an ordinance, so...
Amendment to Macon County road naming and numbering system ordinance, here to forecode it as chapter fourteen of Macon County Code.
That's it.
Is that correct? Okay, I stand corrected. Gentlemen, you have that in front of you, and I will not read that, but we will enter that into the record, as well as you have a list of about what appears to be, Angie, is that about fifteen road names?
I think there's about twenty.
Yeah. And the range and the approximate location and township it exists in, so if you had the time to review that, a motion to approve that would be...
I'd like the motion to move.
Okay, with the motion, say goodbye to Mr. Beal. Any discussion, gentlemen? If not, all in favor, signify the same, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. Anything else to do with that, Chester?
Okay. Thanks, Gary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Chester explain this next part, if that's okay.
Sure.
We had a public hearing, we voted on the QZAP bonds for the Highland School, we did that a month ago, is that right?
Well, we actually just held a public hearing.
We held a public hearing a month ago.
Right.
And, but we need to have another short public hearing, if you'll explain that, Chester.
Certainly. As Commissioner or Chairman Corbin has indicated, there was a public hearing concerning the contract for improvements, to, for improvements to the Highland School financing agreement, and that was held on the eighth of January two thousand thirteen, and in the course of that public hearing, I provided a D book and page reference for the property that was to be used as collateral. In the course of preparing the inter-local agreement with the school board, we determined that the D book and page reference which was reported to the public and which was secured from the county's tax mapping system was not correct. We have since gotten the correct information for recording, and we felt a need to report that to the public in the context of a public hearing, so just briefly, under general statute one sixty-eight dash twenty, anytime that the county contemplates borrowing money on an installment financing contract, it has to have a public hearing if it is going to secure that obligation with real property, and in this case, that is the county's plans. The contract as here indicated to the public is to borrow not to exceed one point five million dollars in qualified zone of cavity bonds or QZAP to renovate the Highland School. The, the funding for that will be over, or the repayment will be over a ten-year period, and it is expected that the net interest rate will be zero percent interest after the QZAP allowance. The property that will be utilized for security or collateral for that loan is the property known as the, or a portion of the property known as the Highland School, which is located at five forty-five Pearson Drive in Highlands, and it is described in D book D dash five at page two fifty-three and the memorandum of action recorded in D, in book D dash fifteen at page one fifty-two, both in the office of the Register D's from Macon County, North Carolina. If there are any questions or any statements in regard to that, the board can receive those.
Okay. Are there any questions about that or statements regarding that, do we have anyone who would like to speak? And basically just to put that off, he said just in plain English, basically what he did was change the address, is that fair?
Change the description.
Is that address, is that address correct on that school level?
Not wanting to read it. Chester, we appreciate the thoroughness of your...
It is a, it's a matter that, that has to be certified to the local government commission that it was held in all respects proper, and it's necessary to communicate proper descriptions of property, so.
We appreciate that. Okay. So any, any other questions or comments about that?
Are we still on track? I mean, is everything, everything's going fine?
Okay, Chester, do we have to vote on that or what?
No, just close the public hearing.
Okay, we'll declare the hearing closed. All right, take care of that. We now have our public comment period, according to this, we do have three folks that have signed up for public comment, the first one I believe is Ms. Kim Terry, and she's here to speak at this time. Kim, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. The last time I was here, it was, we were talking about the pool, I wasn't able to come last time, so I wanted, the last time we had public comment about the new baseball complex, so I wanted to come and just thank y'all for considering that, and I just wanted to let you know that my family and I are so excited about it, I have three children, all are involved in community sports, I have two boys and a girl, and we just signed up for baseball and softball, and as mentioned in previous sessions, we've all talked about the renovations and expansions to our recreational facility and how long overdue those are. Having two sons and a daughter involved in community league softball and baseball, I know the issues with not having enough practice and playing fields. Some of the practice fields are nothing but grit and rocks, and most of them don't have accessible restroom facilities. Last year Franklin hosted eleven and twelve-year-olds All-Star pool play games, and Kevin, you'll remember this, during the second game, the scoreboard didn't work, and that was an embarrassment, because here we are hosting those games, we have surrounding counties there, and we didn't, couldn't even tell what the score, score was. So the kids in this community deserve better, in fact, the kids of Macon County deserve the very best, and, and we need to be better hosts when we're hosting these athletic events. And we all know that our Red Park used to be known as the best in western North Carolina if not the state, it's still a beautiful facility and grounds there, but it's time to move forward, we've outgrown it, and again, I just want to say thank you for, you know, taking this under your wing and making it happen, and I understand that, you know, we're getting a really good deal on this piece of property, and we need to really take that opportunity, because where else in, in Macon County are we gonna have access to that type of property, and then it's flat, you're not gonna have to do a lot of grading to it, so I really, really encourage you to, to move forward with this, with this project, and again, the kids in Macon County are worth it. And not just speaking as a parent and as a person of the community, but speaking as a healthcare provider, for those of you that don't know me, I'm a registered technician, and so I can't tell you how important it is to provide facilities and opportunities for children and physical activity, we know children that are physically active are healthier, they do better in school, they have less fears, so again, you say, well, that's really not our responsibility, but really, it's everybody's responsibility, and this is just providing an opportunity for children. I think last year, for softball and baseball together, we had a little over six hundred children sign up, so that, that's, that's a big, big number for, and, and this is just gonna provide a bigger opportunity for more children, and, you know, we're talking about community league, but we're also travel ball, it's, you know, travel ball is huge and it's growing, my son has played travel, travel ball for five years, and we've traveled in Oxford, we've traveled to South Carolina, we've traveled to Georgia, we've traveled to Canton, so it would just be a wonderful opportunity to be able to play travel ball here and host those games here, and that, we're the perfect place to bring in that revenue from that travel ball, because I'm telling you, travel ball's not going away, it's just gonna get bigger and bigger, and, you know, it's just gonna be a great opportunity for our community and a great opportunity for kids to be more physically active, and not just kids, adults, because I understand there's gonna be a nice little walking trail there, so it's just a wonderful opportunity for the whole community, and I just want to thank you for pushing forward with that and making it happen, thank you.
Can I ask a personal question?
Yeah.
On these trips, and we've talked to some others on these trips, you go down to town to the travel ball, just in general, what would your family spend on, on a typical trip?
Not less than thirty hundred bucks, because we're staying two nights, and you consider food, and that's even taking food to the park, you know, to try to cut back on some expenses, but you, if you're gonna eat out, Buddy's gonna want a popsicle or a sucker, so we're gonna spend money there at the park, we're gonna stay in motels, and we're gonna eat in the restaurants, so yeah.
Kim, thank you very much, you've taken time to make. Next, we have Mr. Billy Van Hook.
Oh, did you get to keep your license, by the way?
Uh, yeah, but we got some others.
You can't make that up.
Because, yeah.
If you don't know, they voted to reach to take away all registered dietitian's licenses and all that, if you don't know that, that's just a little tidbit of new kids.
But that's been corrected, is it not?
Well, there's...
No, not you, neither.
The language is...
Politics. You can't believe it.
Well, I guess, start out with, once again, here I am again, in support of kids, and I'd like to say first of all, thanks to all of you for what you do for Macon County, I have no desire to do what you guys are doing, but I do have desire for you to kind of figure out what some of us are doing and be a part of that, and that is standing up for kids. I was in a meeting a long time ago, and we won't go into it, it was something, Kevin was there, I don't know if you remember, but it was a tough meeting for me, and that's the first thing I said was, I'm here to support kids, because kids can support themselves. You know, if kids vote, I don't know how this is gonna, you know, we need to support our kids right now as much as we support the people that we spend all that money over at the public library, but I don't think, I don't care anything, and I don't think you'll hear a negative anywhere, but I hear except for those small splinter groups who give you guys money and expect your support back. This is the most positive thing that I have ever heard, talked about in this town since I've been on the treadmill. You won't hear negatives in my world, not where I go. I go to Franklin, I go to local people, I see them every day, I talk to people every day, what a great topic to talk about, are we gonna get those fields, everything still good? You know, it's just a big positive out there, it's a big positive everywhere, and the way I understand it, when I was here before, the vote went down, but we had the money to do what we're gonna do, so it's not a matter of, do we have to go out and raise the money? And also, I understand it from checking as best I can, the due diligence is going great, everything's still positive, and I just, my plea to you, United, is don't listen to the little negatives that may be out there. This thing is moving, the people's expecting it, if it don't happen, I think you'll reap the repercussions there a whole lot more than you're gonna reap if they do, if people just sit and wait, they're waiting on this due diligence to come out, and if the due diligence, everybody's more than a few, hey, if the due diligence stops us, then we're stopped, we understand, but if it don't, listen to the phone. I, I can tell you that I think it's a perfect location, I've lived here all my life, I've built a little bit of land, I've tried to buy, you know, I've tried to do different things, is it a perfect location for building? Do we need to compare the cost of that land to what other land costs to build structures or what? No. We compare that land to forty acres of any other land in Macon County where we can do this complex. I've looked, I don't see the other forty acres, I was asked before, at least a year or more a year ago, to help find this, some land, I've looked, it's just not out there. Buy you forty acres somewhere else, do the grading, do what it takes on that forty acres, see how much you got in it per acre that way, it'd be a whole lot more than, than where we are on that piece of property, I think. So, you know, that's the only negative, that's the only thing I've heard, and you'll get that from people who are not really into the world of recreation, that'll be thrown out there by certain people, so other people can hang on to that as a negative, and I certainly, I certainly don't think that, that that is a negative. If we go back and remember too, and I, I think this gets overlooked, I didn't hear this getting talked about, if you, if Tommy Jenkins, that's who Tommy Jenkins is supposed to live, I heard him stand right here and tell people that in the first year, this was a nine to ten million dollar economic impact, first year, I think I'm right on that, if I'm wrong, I apologize for that, but it was a huge economic impact, whatever he said, I think he was loved from the numbers that, that I knew about. So if that be true, that's maybe double what it's gonna cost to do this project in one year. I think that's, that's pretty, that's pretty good. The other thing is, when we build that using county money, we're gonna be working people for Macon County, I think that's, that's a, that's a pretty good positive too, we know a lot of people need work, hopefully we can do it all with Macon County people, like we did back when E.J. built the Red Park, when me and Ronnie Bill would throw rocks at each other out there, picking them up.
That is true.
So, you know, how, that's a, that's another positive, somebody's gonna get some work out of that, and I know people right now that I see every day that need some work out of that, and we've got the best people in the world right here to help us do that work and coordinate that where our people can actually do it. We've got some, we've got some people that, that are pretty impressive, like E.J. Whitmire was, and let's give him a chance. With that being said, the Red Park was way ahead of its time, those people were way ahead of their time, it's, I think, the most used facility in Macon County, and you have them out there from toddlers up to seniors, how many people are out there for, for Fourth of July? I don't know if you're from Macon County, you weren't there, they could probably catch you better that way, you know, what's gonna happen out of that facility, who knows? E.J. and his cohorts had it figured out, took the big step, and I want to do everything that I can possibly do to make sure that this goes forward. If there's negatives out there, if I can work on those negatives, I will be one working on the negatives, I will help you, I will partner with you, I will get the people. We have been trying our best to get ready for Little League baseball, we started a month ago, we are spending Little League baseball money this year on helping fix the field for our kids playing, that's not county money, that come out of my pocket, that come out of the people's set me out of their pockets, I've asked some of you for donations, I've sent you a letter of mail, I'm looking for money, that's not for me, I'm not running the public office, that's for kids, that's for a place to play, you know, six o'clock comes now, you can't practice. Last year, ten thirty, game's over, Highlands has still gotta drive home, they, they left the Red Park at twenty to eleven. You know, is that, is that terribly, I mean, is that just awful? No, I'm not saying that you can't do that, but is that what you want your kids to do? I, I hope not, and again, I'll leave it this, I want to be your partner, I, I want to help you, if there's anything I, that you know of that I can do to help this, this project, I, I will be calling, I, I want to be your help.
There's been some adjustments on the attendments, I know we got a lot to talk about, but we have time to put it on there before we all have a discussion on this, or some... I know we got a lot to talk about.
We can add anything we want. We can add anything we wanna add, I, I don't, I'm prepared to discuss it.
I don't even know. I just, I mean, no, I'm not looking to do anything else, but I'd like to discuss it. And I would like to, to talk to you about, about some negatives, I've been here a lot of them. And I'd like to disturb.
I'd like to hear, cause I've only heard the one that I told you about. Probably negative I heard.
So, could we look at that?
We, we get to both, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm not prepared to make the decision myself, I'll speak it for me, cause we don't, the main thing we don't have then is the phase one. We don't have information back. So, my feeling would be this way we get that and talk about it.
And I certainly don't mind coming back for the next meeting. All I wanna do about, I, I just want you guys to know, hey, we haven't forgotten about this. I mean, we have a budget, uh, I've, I've called a couple of you, I've talked to a couple of you, some of you haven't, but I want you to know that this is, this is a huge topic of conversation in this county. And everywhere I go, people are expecting this to happen. So, they're expecting it to happen, so you're not hearing that much about it. And, and I just want you to know it's out there. And, and you know, if you wanna hear about it, I'll, I'll let people let you know about it. I, I think we have to wait for this due diligence period is over, because if that takes, takes us out of it.
That's what I was gonna say, Ronnie, if they find something that paid one, that look good, it's gonna cost them money.
Right. Exactly, I understand that, and I will be. So, from what I can find out, that due diligence is, is going pretty good.
So far.
Well, that's what I, well, let me make a statement, then we'll discuss. This is what I want to talk to you about, dude. I am one hundred percent building all fields everywhere. I want you to know that. When we voted up here for who, we have one voted to do that, move it here. Um, Ms. Tara, I want to make this mention, you're talking about the hiking trails. You know how many miles hiking trails is in Macon County already? Over two hundred miles plus greenway. Now, I think we should put a lot more ball fields out there, that's what we first discussed. But now, there's changes coming in here, and the only thing, I'm afraid, is not just known, but one guy from Smoky Mountain News is ongoing, is put in the paper what this project is estimated to cost. There is what they say, maybe a lot of people.
And, and I respond to that.
Maybe I ain't read.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
I think the reason that hasn't got talked about a lot, though, I, I think the jury's out on the exact cost.
Right.
And, and I don't think you can talk about that exact cost, but you see your due diligence period and what you're gonna have to do. And second part of that is, and I don't, I don't mind the name, y'all, I, I've never talked to anybody. And I got a feeling, if Louis Pennington can get involved in this, uh, five million can become three million. This is frightening, Commissioner, I mean, this is frightening. We're not in Charlotte.
Louis has a plan to help us.
And he will, and when he does, that is EJ Whitmire. We couldn't have had that out there without EJ Whitmire. But we've gotta wait and see what that costs is. Uh, we've done a lot of good work. Uh, when that cost is actually, then I think it's time to talk about it. Again, your economic impact, that will come past that cost, could be three times as much the first year instead of that.
But at that, there is, and I, as I say, I know we gotta move on, I'm making, that I'm all for. That, and I'm seeing on the ball fields, travel ball stuff, but these other things that's in there that I don't like to need, is something else, cause with all those.
Well, I think that would come from y'all, but here's what I'll say to that. I think what, what that plan's trying to do, I believe that's trying to reach out to all of Macon County. The way the rec park never has been able to. The rec park is never, if you walk at the rec park, you're walking in a road, and people do that. Why do they walk out there? Well, that's where their families are. That's where it's safe. Yeah, there's a lot of walking trails, I'll tell you something. You don't wanna be on that greenway out there with it being lit, you, you probably would be with your family or whatever. So, there's different reasons to have different things, and, but I think that final plan in, if it needs to be tweaked, right here's where it would be tweaked. And, and that can help us.
I said this last meeting, and, and I'd let this to get this public comment period, and I've been very, very, discussing, that's fine. But, but, uh, what, what we're talking about with this project is, I'm not voting to, to fund five point one million dollars. None of us ever agreed to do that. That, that is an extremely high, I think, estimate from engineering firms. We're not voting on that. We have, we didn't vote what to put in there. What we said to them was, will you see if this will, if it won't accommodate the fields, why even talk about it?
Right.
So I'm saying?
Yeah.
Let's see if it'll put the fields on there. If it won't accommodate, then end of story. You don't talk anymore. So that's why we had to have a plan, and yeah, he stuffed a bunch of stuff in there, we need, we've not even talked about it all.
Yeah, that's what I want to talk about.
We're not voting, we don't vote.
And, and that's a good point, and that'd be a special conversation.
That's another discussion for another day. What, to talk about, and, and that'll be when this, this phase one thing's over, we're gonna talk about whether we wanna buy the property. We've already voted to buy the property. But if we wanna vote not to buy the property, but that's a separate, we found the new diligence or any other reason, then we'll vote not to buy the property.
Let me end with this and just say, I'm still excited. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty old in the crib and, and, and out of this stuff, but I can still get excited thinking that these kids will have somewhere like that to go to, rather than going to the church up there where the ground and the rocks are so that you can't play on it, and when it gets dark, somebody gets hit in the head because it's getting dark. And, and in comparison, you go across the street and you've got eight fields with lights on them. And, uh, I think I, I can safely say this, you know, some people are upset because of the location. I can speak to that. I bought property in Macon County twenty years ago. Ten years later, the county bought the property, uh, beside me, has a greenway and whatever. I never felt like that, that I was being pushed around by that. I never felt like the county was moving strongly out there, with the library and all that stuff there. I thought that was progress. I liked that, you know why? I thought, well, might be a trailer park that could've gone in there. So, I, I think I have the right to speak to that too. Uh, I never felt like the county had done anything wrong by improving property beside me. So, with that being said, I'm, I'm still excited.
Billy, how many years have you been involved in mentoring and coaching kids in that town?
I coached my first team when I was a freshman in college in AJ team, and I'm fifty-seven. And I've coached ever since.
Every year?
Yeah, I've never, I've never, I've, I've been a coach, I've been an athletic director, I've been, uh, right now, I can't believe I'm back as leading the boys' Little League Baseball. I have no idea.
Hey, we went and borrowed money, weren't you?
Yeah, yeah, we borrowed money.
Borrowed money to keep it afloat, weren't you?
One time, yes, we did, and we borrowed money to have a, a, what they call breezer league basketball, because it, it was getting so rough, other people.
Then Billy had to sign the note.
Did a lot of, lot of things done there, but I'll tell you something, I probably could've done a lot of things to make a little money, like some of you guys. But I've never been, I've never been, uh, inclined to do that. I, I wake up in the morning thinking about, well, helping kids, always have, and, and I think I always will. So, uh, that's where my heart is, and, uh, my big use to get there with me, and let's partner together, and let's move this thing forward in a positive fashion as best we can.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate all the help, John.
Thank you for your time. Uh, we have Mr. Les Slater, and he is here to speak to us about cemeteries. Let me say this, I say something personal. Uh, Les has been a friend of mine for several years, and, uh, he had a little medical episode three weeks ago.
Yeah, one, one minute.
And, uh, just thankful that you're here tonight, Les. Glad you're out of the hospital and doing, doing better. Thanks.
I wanna speak to cemetery situation. New Hope Cemetery was discovered, and, and a lot of people volunteered to clean it up. And there's been quite a bit of interest in that cemetery and in other, quote, abandoned cemeteries in the county. And all I wanna say is, we've spent money on a lot of, um, I don't wanna be little Indians and so on, because it's important. But I think, looking at the cemetery situation in Macon County, and what the potential is to, there's a lot of volunteers willing to step in. And I understand you have the authority to appoint a cemetery board, and I would support that idea. And I'd like to see it moved forward, because there's not a lot of money involved. You know, it's, it's not a five million dollar budget. Thank you.
I believe this is the cemetery board you're, you're looking at, is that what you're managing? This is the cemetery board.
Yeah, 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 pretty much, if, if it's declared a public, uh, abandoned, a public abandoned cemetery, then Board of County Commissioners are involved. The New Hope Cemetery is a good example of that.
But I do believe there is a procedure.
That you take on responsibility over.
A board. Where is that? To oversee a abandoned public cemetery.
Maybe that's, could you research that and bring that information back?
Do you have one in mind now? Do you have, are there another cemetery in mind that, that needs attention?
No, I haven't researched the status of it, but there's quite a few cemeteries that may even be like New Hope, that they didn't even exist. They were forgotten.
Do you want to know that?
It's right on the edge of town.
Remember Mr. Baldwin that came for the Eagle Scout, and we authorized him to go and complete it, and leave? He said volunteers from what?
Oh, it's from out here.
That's what it's telling you.
It's like, oh, my house.
Join, join the door to the house.
We, we spent, me and about seventeen other guys volunteered last Saturday at one turn, and it all, uh, Baptist Catholic Church, and, yep, grew with this project up there. And, uh, that's, uh, that, that's, that's important to do, but I think what's important about it too is it sets a good example, how people can get involved in their community and volunteer, and it sets a good example for the youth to get involved in something bigger than themselves, and we really commend Drew, uh, and his, and his initiative to do this. And somebody was kidding around with him, said, "How'd you find this cemetery?" And they said he was up there poaching, but I don't believe that. That was really, really something to see. There are several, and this board has, uh, put in efforts and, and money into, uh, two cemetery projects in the past year, the Elwin Over, that Park Chapel, and then, and this one here, and there may be others out there, we don't know, uh, there may be, and we could probably check with, uh, Barbara McCray or somebody who got the issue of the county, they could probably give you a pretty good handle on where cemeteries might be, because that's a real crazy probe of history and information that people use to, uh, trace into.
Thank you.
Thank you, Les, very much. Les, we will take that as a recommendation, and it would be, through the board, to have Chester look into that, and, and maybe there'll be some wisdom in appointing a board. I think what this board has done, Ronnie's right, I've been here a couple of years, we've had a couple of cemeteries come up, I think it's when we don't proactively look for these properties to try to preserve them. When the speaker comes to us and says, "Hey, here's an abandoned cemetery," then it sort of falls to this board to deal with that.
As long as it meets the criteria, outlining some statutes that Chester referred to.
Yeah, I think you've had some that you've dealt with that may or may not have strictly met the definition of a, a public abandoned cemetery, but I, I think that this board has made a determination that there was historical significance to one or more of those, and, and opted to address those problems from that angle. Uh, so you, you know, you've got a couple of different ways you can look at it, but I will certainly prepare a memo for you concerning, uh, the county's, uh, abilities as well as its obligations for abandoned public cemeteries.
Okay. Mr. Slater, thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you could do that. Uh, gentlemen, the, uh, next thing on the agenda is adjustments to and approval of the agenda. Um, I, I have one, one item, I know, uh, there's some information that I think we need to talk about. All of us read in the local media, the, we had the possible, we had a short-term closing of a, a local industry, and I think, Jack, we probably need to discuss this.
We have, have an economic proposal that you need to be discussed by the board, and also you need some attorney-client discussions on what county, uh, county might receive in all those lines, so there is a qualified such a close session.
Both of those are. Yes, so I, I think we need to have a close session and talk about that, if that's, if that's agreeable. We had that, so we already have a close session, and we've struck the words necessary, and we will go under the provision for attorney-client privilege.
As well as the economic development, uh, to discuss potential incentives.
That's correct. Thank you. Gentlemen, anything else you want to add to the agenda, delete from the agenda?
After Neil's presentation, Mr. Trump, I request two minutes just to give you the latest trip east, which applies Monday to you in two minutes, so, just ready for it.
Gentlemen, if you make that, item eight C. Anything else? Paul, you have anything to add?
No, simply.
Jim, Ron?
I, I would like to honor Ron's, we, we said we're gonna talk about that, we did, but under whole business, I'd like to add to Parkerman's and, uh, talk about the, uh, whether or not we think an appraisal, we have an accurate appraisal, or if we want to get one down, I think we'd like to talk about that, would that be agreeable?
Okay. And, and that'll be under oath.
Do you have a reason to do that, Mr. Trump, with that, with that, the due diligence coming back? You want to weigh on that?
We will talk about that. I, if there's some questions of value that I, in getting appraisal.
Well, indeed, the part is, uh, application requires, uh, possibly as many as two appraisals for this coming back.
Well, that's true, and we, if you remember, we got the last appraisal done by Macon Bank, but that was done about eighteen months ago.
And, and it's not clear, or at least, it's not clear to me whether or not they will accept that appraisal, number one, and then, number two, there may be a requirement to have two appraisals anyway.
I just think we'll talk about that.
So, if, you know, if you're going to have to have them, you do need to get the blue book.
Okay, would, let's make that, we'll make that nine, eight, uh, Parkerman's appraisal. Ron, you think to add? Okay, if that's it, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So, let me, gentlemen, second.
Put motion second by the table. Any discussion on the favor, significant, I opposed, that motion passes, you have your agenda. Uh, under reports and presentations, we have Mr. Jerry Cook. Jerry, glad to have you here, and, uh, I know what you mean to say.
Everybody knows what I'm gonna say, I don't need to say it.
I don't even say it anyway, Jerry.
I don't know.
You've been very patient.
He was, he was here before.
I, I appeared here September eleventh, uh, or September two thousand eleven, and requested to get permission to fill in the flood plain at that time. And we still haven't gotten even farther than what we were before. We started this project when we purchased the land in two thousand five. We started filling this property under the old.
And did you say that you're here on behalf of Wells Grove Baptist Church?
Right, I'm at this Wells Grove Baptist Church out here, chairman of the deacon board, to request that we, simply can't come to some sort of agreement, do something in order to allow us to fill. We're in position to get another ten thousand metric tons of dirt from the water plant on the Highlands Road, uh, we're in discussion with him now. Pretty well, we're going to get the dirt, it's just a matter of time, and I requested a little time to come forward to board and see if we can, still dumping it, piling it up, go ahead and push this in. We got quite a bit of dirt from Walmart, and, uh, we're running out of space for it now, unless we put it in the flood plain. Otherwise, I will have to cut it back off and haul it back out of there in order to build the property we have now. So, uh, that's why I'm appearing for the board. This has really been a, uh, a journey for the church. We got the property paid off, we own it now. Uh, they hauled it for free. Uh, one of the local contractors, Will Goes, did now for free. We couldn't, I said, "The good Lord opened the doors for us to be." I said, "The good Lord opened the doors for us to be." And the only thing that's holding us back now is this floodplain ordinance. So, anything that you can do as a board to give us some relief to go ahead and put this dirt into the floodplain. To me, it's an arbitrary line that they drew in the sand out there. I don't know if they flew over that property and put this line in there. It makes no sense to me that we can fill up next to thirty foot, next to the river in one part and move up a little higher where the bank is higher, and we have to set back ninety foot in order to be out of floodplain. Or begin, we fill in floodplain, we'll be out of floodway. Uh, and the floodway line doesn't make any sense. When we started this project, it comes with the county in two thousand five, they said, "Put your silk fence up and start filling."
Did, did that last just me, you, and Jack Corbin, or that?
No, two thousand eleven's when we were there. Two thousand five, that's when we purchased the property and we started the fill project under the old statutes. Uh, two thousand eleven's when the, when the county came to us, I went to get permission from the reality to go ahead and with her fill, and they said, "Oh, no, you can't do it. You have to be back at the new floodplain."
Is that, can you just help me, I wouldn't around here that kind of, is that, that's when the ordinance was changed?
Right.
Sometime between two thousand five and two thousand eleven.
You got the exact date, man?
Two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven. Is that the essence of what you want to say, Jerry? Matt Mason's here. Matt, can you address the board a little bit about the limitations or restrictions keeping doing that or what would have to be done?
Currently, the floodplain ordinance doesn't allow any offsite fill. Basically, it comes from Walmart, right, and it probably comes back to Wells Grove Church. It does allow incidental fill for culverts and bridges, road access, stuff like that. That's one side of it. The other side of it is Macon County's probably on the county of western North Carolina that limits the building floodplain. My recommendation would be y'all to consider either letting the planning board discuss it or y'all discuss it and see if we can't help it. It's awesome. This, Mr. Cook's not the only issue. There, there's multiple, multiple people out there.
I think Mr. Cook just brought it where it should be.
Yeah, he's been-
If we're more restrictive than other counties, I think we need to take a look at it. My recommendation would be to have Mr. Tate take this to the planning board with an indication if, if that's all we want to do, if we would like to take that.
Just, just make sure everybody understands that we're, we're still not talking about filling in the floodway because everybody allows filling in the floodway.
No, state law allows.
And if other county allows some fill in the floodplain, we do not.
And in the essence of expedite process, performance is good. I'll hopefully continue on filling floodplain as part of the further discussion.
Let me get the papers. I think what Jerry asked is whether we could give that info back. I think the planning board is worth it, and we've had this conversation. Jerry and I have had it many times. We've approached it, tried to approach it three or four different ways. Uh, it can make it plausible, but, uh, it's, I think I was the only one here when we passed this, and if I remember correctly, it was a long discussion and-
That was before our team. That was in oh seven.
Yeah, you're dodging out the show. The rest of us are here, right? I will say this, and not to put, yeah, I voted, I voted, I raised my hand without having to down the vote. But at that time, and I'm not one way to don't like, but there was some information that might have been given to us that was not correct. I think that's a far assumption. That ain't no excuse. There's no excuse. So I, what my question would be, that was then, this is now, is, uh, when could we have it back here? The jury's got to tell these folks something, and a lot of other folks, so when could we have it?
We don't need to vote on exactly what we're voting on, but if I could just get a consensus ahead and out of the board, would it be your intent to change this ordinance?
Yes.
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 And yes.
And yes.
So what we could say to him tonight, since we can't vote to do that tonight, there's no wording of law to change it, Chester. So we could refer that through Mr. Tate to the planning board, Mr. Mason. Could you meet and have a recommendation back to us by our, our, well, certainly by our march meeting? Would that be timely enough?
We will have the joint meeting on twenty first of February. We would have to call especially sometime after that.
And Mr. Cook, when do you need to know about this?
Two thousand eleven.
Chester was up for our vote here.
The, uh-
I mean, it's like, we're probably will. And there, and there's a lot of folks that have good research about this, and they'll be, they'll be able to. Another thing, Chester's, uh, would you or somebody make sure that we're not infringing on our FEMA agreement or FEMA insurance or something?
Let, let me address that. That's a topic that Matt and I talked about some time back. We were both concerned about the potential for that here, and I asked him to communicate with the appropriate folks at the state level, and they assured him that as long as you were not filling in the floodway, you were okay.
And we have a letter with their name on it.
I think I have an email.
With somebody's name on it.
But they will have to, for all it's-
So to answer your question, Matt has already addressed that. We have to have a public hearing. I think there will have to be.
Can we do that, can we do that tomorrow?
I think we could.
Well, you, you need to have-
We just need to advertise.
What word is going to be on the, on the amendment for the ordinance before, so did you have to advertise it?
If it would be helpful for this board, I could prepare a, a draft amendment to the ordinance for the understanding. It's a draft and such it's a-
And if the family would like for them to leave, we have time to-
Sure.
-review it. Review the, that language.
We have a meeting-
Would that be helpful?
Yes.
Go ahead and do it.
Yes.
We have a meeting tomorrow, afternoon, and then one following Thursday.
Jerry, can you have it sent back tomorrow?
If you can discuss with him.
I guess, without my shirt off, Jim.
Jerry, I think all we can say tonight is there appears to be a strong indication that the board is leaning toward changing that ordinance.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
I can tell, Ronnie's been wanting us to get this right out of here, and he's like, does his turn to ask about the county lease and the floodplain.
I am. Well, let me room down there at the bottom for one act and you figure.
No.
Like, we would say ordinance on that.
That's what may be. And, and just, just to let our media folks know, we're public here, if you had done a lot of research for this thing, I, this first meeting, I've been, I'm not as smart as these guys. I've had to try to learn a few things about these ordinances after I've gotten on board. But talk to Mr. Mason, and he indicated that our local ordinance was much more, much stricter than other counties, uh, over and above the state, the state wires.
When it comes to filling the floodplain, yes.
Well, the point is, a lot of us, everyone could understand and ask the question then and now, is if the property, if the land is on your property, you can use it to fill. You're still changing the water, your, your, your property, that's what I'm, and you know, it's to, it is to Jerry Cook being persistent and, and, uh, so thank you. Thank the folks, your congregation, that, for being persistent.
Jerry, they, they do hear you. Yeah.
Thank you. Very nice to come up.
And next, we've got veterans memorial. Neil, are you here? Hey, we're getting in though. Come on, do it.
How y'all doing?
Good, Neil.
Um, I'm Neil Rea, I'm the chair of the Veterans Memorial Committee. Appreciate y'all letting me come here. One thing I'd like to say first is, I'm not asking for any money.
Good. Thank you.
Uh, you know, we, we had our dedication back in two thousand nine, and we have added some features since then. Uh, we think we've got it pretty much right. We don't plan on adding any, any more features out there. Uh, no military hardware, nothing like that for kids to get hurt on. Uh, but what we've had, and to maintain that place is not inexpensive at all. It's about sixty-five hundred bucks a year to maintain that. And Cattails from Macon County, they have been doing it for us on the contract. And you couldn't ask for any better. They're out there once a week mowing, they pick up all equipment, they blow everything off of there, they plant new flowers, they, they trim the roses, they do everything out there. And it keeps it looking like it ought to be kept for a veteran. We get a few donations, but our main source of income is the memorial of bricks. Unfortunately, brick sales in two thousand eleven, we sold seventy-nine. In two thousand twelve, we sold thirty-eight. Uh, that's roughly half. Now, I don't know if people in Macon County have kind of forgotten we have the Buckland Memorial, which personally, I think we've got the best one in western North Carolina. Uh, I don't know, are they pretending that, that we've got it or they've just been putting off purchasing a brick for a veteran? People may not realize that you don't have to be from Macon County to have a brick out there. We have gotten brick orders from Hawaii, Alaska, that far away, because they wanted to be in this particular memorial because they'd either come through and seen it, or have friends here that have talked to them about it, described it to them, and wanted to have someone memorialized with a brick. Uh, now, bricks are not hard to order. We have got a kiosk out there at the main gate that's, that's covered up, and we've got envelopes with brick forms in them. And all you got to do is fill out that brick form, and then you check with the brick form, and it's already addressed, you just put a stamp on it. Uh, and you may not realize that these brick forms, these bricks are tax-deductible because we're a nonprofit. And we've got a lot more room for, for more bricks. It's a great way to honor a veteran. I've been told several years ago, there's forty-five hundred veterans here in Macon County. And that's a lot of veterans. We'll put that many bricks out there if they keep saving men. Getting the bricks is a great way to support Macon County. It's a great way to support Macon County and, and the memorial, so we can keep it looking good for a long time. And I think it's just good for the county, just for people coming through, see all the flags flying up there, say, "Hey, what's that?" Plus, we've got signs north and south directing people to the memorial, the brown signs. And I just wanted to get it out in the public again, that we're still living, running, we're still going.
Yeah, how much is a brick?
All right, we have three prices on bricks. We have the four-by-four, excuse me, four-by-eights, that's a lot of dollars. We have an eight-by-eight, it's two fifty, and we have a twelve-by-twelve, it's five hundred dollars. It may sound like a lot of money, but it's for a lot of maintenance work. And I, I got one for my dad, and he's, he's not here.
Well, thank the folks that helped you there and sit there and make sure.
That's why I wanted to-
That's why you're here.
Because I do, baby.
And we can also say this one issue, we support that property, and, and I have bricks out there for my family members, and I would encourage people to do that. Better sacrifice a lot, and, and as a small gift, honor your service and your neighbors. I as one of the people in service.
Well, I appreciate y'all letting me come out here and talk, and, uh, hopefully we'll get some bricks.
Thanks, Neil, it's all right. Thank you.
No, I'm great.
Thank you, Neil.
Eighteen review report, Commissioner.
Real quick here, I was in Raleigh last week, uh, had meetings with you on Tuesday. First of all, some good news, uh, there is a new conference being formed of county commissioners who are now in regislate.
Chairman?
Is Elaine Harmon from Forsyth County, and Becky Carney from Mecklenburg County, Chuck McGrady from Henderson County, and Jim Davis of Macon County, Resident Assistant to the Senate. Uh, it appears to be that, it was not all that, we had a really good attendance. These folks are very important, they know how county government works, with a hundred new folks in Raleigh. And a lot of these are new, are new folks. So we had a, a good chance to speak with them, had to interact with them, uh, Chris Green, and, uh, but this is a new conference being formed, and we're, we're hopeful that they can stand in the gap with counties. They've, uh, they've lost the first couple rounds, definitely. So, uh, and we're going to meet with them again at this committee tomorrow. Second thing, I had to change to address, uh, the Justice Committee in Raleigh with Judge Smith, who is, uh, basically over all the magistrates and tried to explain the magistrate problems that were having in rural counties. If you don't know, most of the rural counties have come back to three magistrates now. Three men that way since two thousand, it just went into effect really December thirty-first. We had a magistrate step down in, in eleven, and he moved to somewhere else, we weren't allowed to fill that position. So, uh, it's a real problem for our magistrates. Most, and we talked about the problems they're having in a lot of ways, but voluntary commitments is what we want to talk about a lot, that is the first step in voluntary commitment. The voluntary commitment to Macon County is key to rise, and then we have a pass court meeting this week. As they rise, so do the church department's stations, uh, and the time they spend in the ER. So, uh, so the twenty-second, we now have, it's going to be video, because we don't have a magistrate that can go to it in actual, so, uh, the health department is looking up for the magistrates to go, uh, watch some things. The Judge Smith is, is back, and we want to follow up on that on Tuesday. Uh, and now Macon County, we now have a magistrate that will have direct contact with provider, milk help provider on some of these, uh, involuntary commitments. Their, uh, the average standard ER is still home around thirty-five, thirty-seven miles. Unacceptable. The law enforcement comes to Macon County and the citizens. So we talked about these things in Raleigh, a lot of rural counties are experiencing the same thing. Of course, we're people from Highlands, uh, and we all know that story that you have strange. They do have video conferences in Highlands, I'm glad to hear. They have a video conference, it does not work for DUIs, does not work for domestic violence, uh, and those are two weeks' calls. So if you're touching DUI in Highlands, they have one off for working. Basically, Highlands is covered, because they have law enforcement. So we did talk about that, the Justice Public Safety Shooting Committee, and it was well-received. And, uh, so we'll follow up on that, uh, next Monday night and Tuesday. So, uh, but the Senate, Senator Bill's being muted, you are the Senate Justice and Public Safety Approbation Sheriff of Fresno, as was Reverend Jimmy Bones, Reverend Firecloth and Pat Hurley, and they're the, they're the Approbation Sheriff of Justice and Public Safety. We're asking for reinstating rural counties' magistrates. But we need, I mean, these magistrates were in, uh, you know, their own call, their own, they're appointed in their own call, but some of them manage up to seventy an hour a week. So, uh, that's some of the things we talked about. We also had a good meeting, Senator Davis and I, with the folks. If you don't know, on the mental health side, the LME Board, the government's board's change is on the thirteenth of October, and we're really concerned about that, as it limits the county's involvement, trying to get that changed. We have a fifteen-county catchment area, some county is going to be left out yet, they want to send a check. Is that part of the settlement? So, uh, so we're trying, we asked for an option of, of extending the board, our board is thirty members, so each county and the catchment area should be represented. We feel that it always, it always comes back home, that we continue to work on rural health side, so, uh, we had a, we had a, I gave-
The county that we're part of, the money and tour, but you're not allowed to have representatives for participation on there, and if you don't, your penalties against you.
So we're working, we did, and we, we met with the office of legislation, and, uh, and he seemed regular, and he did call me back this week and ask some more questions. and he did call me back this week and ask some more questions. It ain't us against them, but here's the fact, you've got eighty counties, and twenty counties have more legislative board than the other eighty combined, sort of puts some rural counties in this pain. And that's just the way it is. But thanks for supporting this board in this region, regardless of the politics, and we have a really good representation in this region, the best evidence, and our legislature that built it up, so we encourage you, so thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. The next item in the whole business, and I, I'll add this very quickly, you don't have to make a decision, not much of a thought, Chairman bringing this up, we voted back in November to buy our property, we headed into the due diligence phase, we wanted to find out all these things, and we're doing that, and then we decided we want to find out more things, so we extended that, Mr. Turner. And during that process, we did receive an appraisal, the last one done on that property was about eighteen months ago, that appraisal was, is it held up quite a period of appraisal?
Yeah, I think the, 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 it was, he said to me, it was close, seven hundred thousand dollars, seven, I think it was seven hundred grand, yes, a little over, about seventy, that's, seventy point three. However, if we're doing our due diligence, if we feel like part of that due diligence is to get an current appraisal, then we'll probably even think about doing that, we extend our due diligence period to April fifteenth, is that right?
Yeah, you have, your examination period runs right to the end of the fifth.
And I, I wouldn't just put for the new, at least I wouldn't talk about it this time, I wouldn't talk to the guy that did the last appraisal, was the guy Duvall, his local appraiser here, and that's right, and, and, that Thunder guy, that they did the appraisal. And I asked him, I said, if the board wants us to do an appraisal, could you do it, what kind of time period would be, and he said, yes, certainly could, he needed a period of, you know, three weeks or so to do that, didn't want us to call him and say, we need to, you know, appraise it. So, if we're, if we're going to do that, and we can, get a member, I'm just saying a guy that puts their office in the pool, we might need to tell him to do that now, or if we could do it, our marketing, we would still have time to get that back before the end of due diligence. So, I'm just throwing that out, is that, is that a concern?
You'll have, you'll have your own job, and you'll afford to, yeah, but actually, we're already got a lot of the patient out there, if you get some more next week, you'll have all the information to pay more by the end of this month, or whatever, if you use it for what purpose you can.
Do we have to pay for these, I mean, you're looking at probably another fourteen grand for the appraisals?
Well, I asked, because on the record, I asked Mr. Duvall, where he would charge to, he just said, normally, we charge about five thousand dollars to do it.
So they'll have two, that's at least eight.
They could count and make the bank one.
Rather than us assuming we've got to have two, Jack, help me, if we, if we pose that question to our consultant engineer as to whether or not we're going to have to hire two?
A copy of that appraisal, appraisal we have was included with our, in part, application and, Louie and Brian seemed to make it that was fine.
If they're, if I'm recalling correctly, from reading, in part of application, there were certain transactions, if the acquisition was over a certain amount of money, they wanted two appraisals, but if for some reason I had in my mind, we might be over that amount of money.
She, she didn't think so, she didn't.
No, she didn't actually think that.
It's already expensive, it's part of grant, it's been, January third, I mean, if they're not going to require it, then. I guess that's the only reason I'm saying this, I'm just talking about it publicly, we, we said as a board back in November, we want that, and we said, well, we have these concerns, da-da-da-da-da, and if it's being checked off one-on-one, there's concern, and then, then, well, okay, is it worth what we offered for it? It's not, or not?
I think the appraisal would have been appropriate at some point, we're into this thing so far now, that considering the overall possible extended tiers of developing this property being a five million dollar, unless you're a four thousand dollar advisor on that, I mean, obviously, it would benefit.
But what matters is determining what property you're working for.
Oh, great, boy, you wouldn't buy this property without, I wouldn't, or wouldn't approach financing individually.
And I'm just saying, is that a concern? And I'm just saying, if you've already decided, yeah, I'm for this, I want to do it, that's fine, if you decided, I'm not going to do it, I heard a good quote one time, I wrote it down, the mind cannot change what the heart has already decided. So if you're making mind that, one way or the other, it doesn't matter, I'm saying, if the heart of what you would give your decision off is, is that appraisal accurate? If we're going to get one. But if, 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 what, if you make any money, does market change that much, take ten months? I don't know. And a lot more is always in the sand, it's, whatever. It's a lot cheaper, but, I'm respectful of that, maybe it's just discussion that we can start.
I think it's more disgusting, maybe let the paid one come in, that time, it certainly, I think, I have a feeling, if paid one is behind it, if they decide to, I think you're going to have to move, I don't know how to take the other appraisal. Well, I, I just remind those that sat on the board at the time, the individual contract was loaded on, I think basically, you, you look at what was being asked and what's been bought for, you determine at that time, in your estimation and in your judgment, that that was a good price, so long as you've used these properties the way you've contemplated it being able to.
That's exactly right. But I'm just, we're just getting that out, I heard folks say, maybe it's not worth it, and let's make that determination. We're not, I'm throwing that, because I don't want to talk about it after that. Do that. While, I'll quit on that, we've talked about it in March, I guess, Paul Ryan was here once, said, if the paid one comes back unfavorable, then, we're not going to do it anyway. Okay.
Does that sound a bit, can we start with the rest of the certification?
No, I don't have any to start with. Under due diligence, we have the defibrillator replacement, the events staff recommendations, our service and direct.
Two million, two point three, right?
Very well. We're glad to see that. You got a little bit right. We're available to take a look. I will, we'll stand and reset. Ian Nellis, you can take a few minutes.
At our, our last meeting, that was at the retreat, I brought some information about defibrillators, and how we would like to proceed on replacing what we have. And tonight, I brought our cell phone, and eight, what we're looking at, a purchase, along with this purchase, not only would we get the defibrillators that we need to upgrade and our outdated equipment, but we also, in this purchase, folks, you have in your package, shows three of these autocults, which we've done three in that purchase. And that's the same equipment that we tried to buy, it was demonstrated here, one time before, it's been about three years, and we weren't able to raise funding on that. So through this purchase, we might possibly go get three of these. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tim Nellis, if I have anything to tell you, I'll, I'll make sure.
Bring the ambulance driver business class today.
I've got one.
Good. That's him who want to talk to you.
All right, so, I appreciate y'all letting me come in here and show this to you, this is a different form than I'm, than I'm used to presenting this, and so, try not to go too deep into this device, and just go over some of the differences of what this has compared to what they currently, what they currently have. I get excited about it, so I will go, like, I'll try, I'll do my best with that, though. The, one of the differences that, in the current models that they're using is battery life, batteries are a maintenance issue that constantly costs part of their money.
Just for a second, we're talking about the defibrillator now, right?
Correct.
And just a little bit, the defibrillators that we have are different, and what we have here, and for once, we have a fairly old, the defibrillator is not just something that's looking bad, it does a lot more than that, so, this is a little, my original idea of what the defibrillator was, or immunoscopy, because he could use it, but I'm not sure everybody understands, not that it's more than just a, something.
I'll do my best to explain the differences in the defibrillator that's sitting out here, the old one that's on the wall here, that's in public access, versus this device and how they would apply it in the field. This is taking, you know, pre-hospital equipment out to the field. So it's going to allow them to get a pulse ox reading, be able to see, measure CO for carbon monoxide, a few other cardiac rhythms, they'll be able to see that, CPR feedback and help, it'll be quite a bit. But I will turn it on and show just, you know, some of that and the differences. But first, as far as battery life, where it was, the sealed acid batteries that they currently are using, build up a memory, and over a period of time, those batteries will show full charge, but then at, after ten minutes, they will, they will go down, because it is measuring a full capacity, so it could be eighty percent memory built up and ten percent less. This battery is a six, six-hour battery versus the four that they're currently using. It's a lithium ion battery, and actually gives them a runtime of how much time is left on it, it's a three hours plus two hours, all the way up, that's full charge. Like the defibrillators that are out, out there on the wall, it has a ready-for-use indicators on it, so a quick glance, they can take a look at it and be able to see that it's ready to work. That's this, this here. We'll turn the device on, it's going to do a self-check, which they're certainly going to do, so it goes, runs through and makes sure that it's working before it begins to go. So all of the parameters that are showing on here, down below are all of our vitals, so those are those measurements, our SPO2, our CO measurement, again, for firefighter rehab, or carbon monoxide poisoning, our blood pressure, one of the differences, some of the units don't have blood pressure, some of them do. The blood pressure on this is well-challenged blood pressure, it's a dual-lumen blood pressure, meaning that it's going to try and catch the blood pressure on the inflation, rather than the deflation. And that's important because it's getting it faster. The old technology that, that is in every other monitor, goes all the way up to max inflation, patient fights it, and then it tries to calculate it that back down. With that, it's also synchronized to that specific patients are with. So with that, it's, can tell the difference between bumps in the road and the patient's heartbeat, so you're getting more accurate BP's while you're traveling, which is, vibration is an issue in the back of the ambulances and being able to get accurate readings, so you will have that information a little bit better. This device will also allow them to have four different tracings on the screen, so lead two is an important lead for them to see. We can also have lead two and three, we can also see our capnography, our end title CO2 waveform, which is very important in cardiac arrest, to see how well the compressions are being done and how the oxygen is exchanging. Because after all, if we survive the cardiac arrest, we want to make sure that we get out and we're neurologically functioning. The units also, we've looked at, put on here too, is temperature, with some of the new protocols in stroke patients, getting them cooled down as fast as possible and getting them in, into the hospital, so they can do the vascular cooling, we have temperature, or esophageal, rectal, temperature probes, so we can measure core temperature as well as skin temperature, to see what, how effective it's doing. Another difference is to be able to, the ability to have all of the twelve leads on the screen. So twelve leads, they're putting twelve, ten electrodes on the patient, getting a full view of the entire heart, we can see that information. This device will also, I'll pull up an old one, will also be able to, nope, no data.
Is that a new?
Excuse me?
Is that a new device that you're getting?
Yes, sir. So one of the big things they're looking at is STL elevated myocardial infarctions, or STEMI, as they call it. Then there's a golden window, this device will be able to analyze that, show them on the screen what that is, as well as the patient's information and the measurements that they're measuring and the changes in the QRS complex. You can also, they can also now see snapshots of that, of that twelve lead. For the four, it's going to give you the entire twelve lead, this is going to give you two and a half second, bite-sized bits that they can look at, static, what they took, and what is going on right here. And they don't lose any pictures of their, of their vital monitoring, so everything that they're wanting to see is right there in front of them. In the E series and the M series, it's in deeper menus, you've got to find that.
And the E series and the M series, what we have in that?
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the series.
And, and it doesn't have this technology. So what I'm showing you now is the things that, that this device has that those, that those don't. Another feature that's really helpful is there's a snapshot feature. And a lot of times when they're running the back, treating the patient, writing into the chart, they might see a funky rhythm go across the screen. Normally, on their machines, they'll have to dive across the patient, try to hit that before it gets across the screen. What that's going to do, the snapshot feature's going to go back twelve seconds and forward twelve seconds, so you're going to have a twenty-four second snapshot of what was happening, what you thought you saw, it'll go back, so you don't, you don't miss anything, you don't lose anything, so it's increasing patient care.
Is that recorded?
Yeah, it is gathered within, within the machine, so for.
That's recorded, did you, I mean, it's not printed out?
It can't, it will print out that snapshot, so if you needed to see it right away, you hit that, you can have it print on, on capture, it will pull out twelve, because you wanted to see it, or you want to saw something fun, you hit that and it'll print out. Okay? So, you can go back and review that information as well, afterwards, and see what was going on, what, what caused that, that specific rhythm. Now, this device will also transmit, based, transmit to any of the hospitals via cellphone, Wi-Fi hotspot, Bluetooth connection.
But if you don't have cellphone service?
Well, we actually have, we, we do have the ability to do it with satellite service, so if you had that.
A lot of places we don't have cellphone service.
Right, I've actually, in my car, have a loner satellite receiver and Wi-Fi thing, that we use the Wi-Fi on this to, to send it via satellite, because I cover part of most of West Virginia, and there isn't a lot of coverage in West Virginia, so that's.
That covers the deal?
No.
How much?
No, the, the ability to do that, the ability to do that is within the machine, this is a separate company that's allowed us to try it, to make sure that it works. So it's, it does work.
How much was it?
That I would, I would have to look at, because we don't, I don't represent it, so I don't know for certain, but they do have.
Say that again, if we don't have cellphone service, you can't transmit this to the hospital, right?
Well, if you don't have cellphone service, you, one, it's going to give them that information, and they're being trained on this in the field, so they'll be.
One thing, I wanted to address that, is we, our current models have the ability to do the cellphone service, they, they don't do the satellite. Our medics, and I'll brag on them every day, our medics know how to read a twelve lead. We don't rely on cellphone coverage to send this to a cardiologist somewhere and wait for him to come to the phone and come to the factory machine, read it, and come back and tell us what it is. Our, our guys are top-notch, you can ask all of our emergency room doctors, they can read a twelve lead, they can tell how to treat a twelve lead by reading it and everything, so the transmission is not really a factor, we, we don't even have to use that, and we'll treat it perfect in the field without, without just laying treatment of the transmission.
All over the nine and a halo, and then you could?
I'm sorry?
All over, through the nine and a halo, and over in there, you could?
Yeah, they, I mean, our medics over there can read a twelve lead as good as it makes here, so they, the necessity for transmitting that back and forth to the hospital is, is not necessary.
And, and that's not an additional cost in this, it's just a feature that, that is, that is ingrained into the, into this particular unit, as it is in the E series. So, yeah, that, you, you treat the patient, not the machine, so you're looking at what's coming out, and the strip that you're getting, relying upon that, and calling that in, like he's, like he's saying, because even in. Because even in, as good as cellphone coverage gets, there's always gonna be pockets where there's never been coverage. So that capability is, is there as well. And then there's a, a whole bunch of other stuff. As far as end tidal CO2, again, that's, um, a little bit more above what you, what you wanna look at particularly right now. And all, and this information too is, is stored into the device so that it can be uploaded into their electronic patient care records. So we get more accurate, uh, information on the patient. We can gather, capture that information for training purposes as well. And then we also have CPR that is built in that helps with that. So first responders here might be waiting on, if we can get these auto pulses there, we'll be doing compressions and we'll help them be able to do compressions and see an accurate downward compression within that range of two or two inches or greater. So it measures a quality of, of compressions. So that's the, uh...
So they're either fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars a piece?
They're actually a little bit more, that's the base unit. And the way that the, um, they're set up, because of all the other parameters that are, that are needed on the device to meet state protocols or future state protocols or what you're doing in, in the service, it adds and goes a little bit more.
You got a copy will be in the...
Yeah, it, it, it goes a little, little down.
If I'm right, on page one, it says X-series manual monitoring, that's what that is, right?
Yeah, that's the base, base unit.
Fifteen thousand dollars a piece and twelve, uh, one thousand dollars.
Yeah, so if you look at that middle line...
It says fourteen nine ninety-five.
That, that is, that is the, that's kinda like getting a cheese pizza, right? And then you add your pepperoni, you add your other stuff to that.
This is adding everything below this.
The price is thirty-one five eight.
Correct.
With all the bill... So this is price per, per add-on, like the best options?
Yes.
Expensive bag?
This machine has a six right here. With all, with everything, all the parameters that we would like to have on it. It's like buying a pickup and then you're, you're adding OnStar and Airconditioning for the drive. Every option is gonna cost you.
So this does automatic CPR?
This machine here is the one that was demonstrated about three years ago, then that does the...
Out of the building?
Yeah. And that, that's what that...
And those compressions and...
Correct. So a combination of the two, you're gonna get, uh, better, better results. Now, they, like I was saying, the CPR in this particular one, that, that will show there in the quote, is a, is a visual for, that's how they respond here to, to the building here with this AEB that's here. They can plug the pads that are, that somebody's already started in the CPR here, plug those pads into this device and get real-time rate depth and, um, you know, a bunch of other different helpful features on the screen. Be able to see that they're doing those quality compressions, because it's really about quality of compressions and, and circulating blood flow that is, uh, leading to higher survival rates. So that, that incorporates, and they can, now they can use that in the field. Since we're looking at three of these devices, that doesn't cover everywhere, um, at this particular time. So the other agency, other stations would have this, that would be able to assist them until the auto pulse arrived.
This is all bid through state contract?
This isn't through state contract.
This is a discussion tab?
Well, I've got, uh, I've got the auto pulse here that I wanna show you. I don't know how many of you have seen it. This is, this is actually the device I saw that...
Like most, most of the members have seen it.
Okay, good. This is, the auto pulse over here is a non-invasive cardiac support pump. So what it's gonna be doing is, is compressions for, for the provider. One, it's doing quality compressions all the time. If it can't do a good compression, it won't do a compression. If the patient slides, you don't have to worry about it compressing up on their chest or up on their throat. It gets to their abdomen, you don't have to worry about it doing it that way. So it's a quality compression on, on each patient. What it's doing in standard, in standard CPR, you're pushing down trying to get two inches or greater. Well, this is doing thoracic compression. So it's giving, it's priming the pump. It's giving the whole chest a squeeze. So sorta like a bellows or I, I always relate it to a fuel pump on a, on an outboard where you're squeezing it, you feel the fluid coming through that versus, versus a weed eater where you're just trying to tap and getting a little bit on the primer. So this is gonna give a better, better, um, circulation near normal blood flows. And it's simple to deploy, it's carried in a bag, it's battery operated, and it, not only does it do great compressions, it allows the provider to stay safe in the back. Um, 'cause now if they're doing compressions in a moving vehicle, one hand holding, standing up, trying to get to the quality of compressions, it's virtually impossible. So this allows them to stay seated, do the compressions, monitor the patient, and then get them into, into the hospital. Hopefully, they've, have return spontaneous circulation where they keep that going and allow them to get into, to that cardiac procedure that saves their lives. Okay? So any questions about that? Or I'll just show you how this thing works and then we can, uh, do compressions. Now, I don't know what's the best way for you guys to be able to see this.
Let, let's sit on top of there.
Can you all see if I put it on the bench? Yeah, if I set it out on one of these benches, can you all see it? Right here?
While you're setting that up, um, keep in mind that, uh, with, we would get those with the purchase of these. This is something, this is not an extra purchase after, after the bag. If, with the full purchase of the twelve units, we'd get three of these, uh, at no cost to us. One would go to each one of the ambulance bases. Just for logistics, um, Highlands, Vanahela only run one truck, 'cause they would have theirs on a truck. We would keep the one in the Franklin base in a neutral position somewhere. But when they did get the doctor for cardiac arrest, the truck that's up there would get it.
All right. So, looks like a mess when I take it out of the bag, but each one of these features has a function and, and that, what it's sitting on right now is a, uh, is a, is a soft carry stretcher. What this allows is provider to be able to grab it, grab the board, take it into that tight crevice in the back bathroom where that patient is laying down and not able to, to get that backboard into it. Place this down next to it. So it's got shoulder straps to keep the patient from moving.
Would you like one of the commissioners to lay down a bit?
But I will not turn it on, I will not turn it on because it is dangerous. Uh, because it does pump near, uh, normal blood flows, so gotta be careful of that. So we would just put number one, right where number one is, number two, where number two was, and then we hit continue. It's analyzing the size of the patient and it'll begin giving compressions at a thirty to two compression ratio. Now from here, I can pick, pick up the patient, start to transport him. Don't have to do anything other than strap them down. We have the shoulder harnesses that will go over to keep the patient in, in where they need to be. At twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, it'll beep. This lets medic know when to give two breaths, 'cause you don't wanna hyperventilate the patient, and it will continue to keep giving compressions. Now, if they were, if the patient was intubated and they were, it's every seven or eight seconds and lets medic know when to back. Okay, so now they're just listening for that beep and doing that. Should I have to stop for whatever reason? Because we wanna check the underlying rhythm to know whether it's shockable or not? I hit stop. Can't really see it up here, but a timer will pop up on, on the bottom. That lets us know, at ten seconds, it beeps once, it says something happened, okay, you stopped. Why did you stop? You need to keep going, 'cause after twelve seconds, the heart loses perfusion. At twenty seconds, it beeps three times, saying, you know, pick it up, let's go, come on, get going. At thirty seconds, it'll continue to beep until we shut it off. Industry average of time off a chest is thirty-seven seconds, okay? So that, we give a note for seven seconds there. All I need to do is hit continue, it makes sure that the patient hasn't moved, hasn't adjusted, and begins giving compressions again. Now, the slide carry underneath it, it's hard to do on this bench, but what we would do is grab these under handles, pull them out. The patient is now controlled in that, in that device. We can drag them around in and out if we need to in this tight single wide back bedroom. We can carry them forty-five degree angle up, forty-five degree angle down. So if they're in the basement, we can get them out, grab them up in the attic, we can, you know, take them down, upstairs, okay? After...
As you know, what he was saying about carrying them up and down, without one of these, and we're doing CPR manually, when you carry them downstairs, we have to quit. We have to hold the stretcher, carry them down, 'cause there's not room for people to stay in there, do the compressions while you're moving the patient. So, and it's, it's very vital to keep this going when CPR starts.
And with, no, that's fine. The information that, there is an information, a menu on here where I can go in and, and check out my last patient information. I can see how many compressions I did, how, how long my pause time was, um, and, uh, and then upload that information for training purposes later. Now, again, to pull this out and transport them is a lot quicker. And like you're saying, you can't do compressions on a patient while you're carrying them, so you have to stop. And the big thing is reducing compressions. So not only is it near normal blood flow, but you're keeping the patient's organs viable, pregnant mother, keeping the fetus viable. You're also, um, keeping them viable for, for, uh, the, lost, for, um, organ...
Organ donation.
Thank you, woo! Lost that one, as much as I talk, I'm gonna think I lost a word in there. So you're looking for or, organ donation, you're, you're keeping them viable there. So you might not save that particular person, but with that, you're multiplying five, six, seven, eight people down the road, enhancing the quality of life. But they'll, they'll be able to see their blue patients turn pink again. They've had patients that, on this, where it will, they'll, they'll pink up, they'll wake up, just stop the board, and then they go back down, they turn back on, they kinda rise back up, wondering what's going on because it's functioning so much. The other thing is, as dynamic as it looks, okay, it is not a, an aggressive, uh, device, okay? So I can put my hand under here, right? Put this ping pong ball put under here. Shouldn't crush the ping pong ball. Because what it's doing is taking two hundred pounds of force, reducing thoracic cavity by twenty percent, but dissipating that over one hundred square inches, so you get about two pounds per square inch. Human chest could take about five pounds per square, five pounds per square inch before a break. And you can attest to that, I did this, compressions on this out there, and cut my hand with it, so I wasn't about to do it again to show you that just a couple, I did what, three or four compressions on that? And just cut myself, so I learned my lesson out there and I wasn't gonna do that for any bleed all over. Any questions regarding this?
At one time, when we first demonstrated that out at the emergency training center, there was some statistics. Um, and I, I don't know if, if Mr. Doctor had those, Jack, or...
You talked about the, how, how much of percentage it increases the chance of survivability with this compared to normal, uh, CPR and so forth. And the statistics on how many people have been saved by using a device like this?
Yeah, so...
Over several years?
So over the years, I mean, they have that information and since that period of time, the numbers have just, just increased. Richmond Ambulance, at the time, they, before they implemented this, had a three percent survival rate. They went to nine percent, and then from nine percent, they went up to twenty percent. We just concluded a forty-three hundred patient study, CERP trial pharmaceutical grade thing. So they're still digging through the, uh, the survivability. But the survival discharge rate is, had increased and I, I don't like throwing out random numbers without, uh, being exactly correct, but I can get you all of that information some, in a summary to show you. This, these are the newest and latest, greatest updates, and this is how their survival discharge and how everything's worked since we saw it back in two thousand ten.
Would this help you in the back of an ambulance coming off of L.J.A. from here to Highlands?
Oh, yeah. Yes, no.
Have you had to give CPR in, in the back of an ambulance coming on a crooked road?
Oh, yeah. And they don't get any cricketers in the Highlands.
And that's tough.
It is. Very tough. That, I can see the, I can see a lot of advantages to that. Takes away the, the, I mean, that, that saves one person right there. I mean, with two people working on it, if you don't have any first responders show up, which is what happens sometimes, then you only got you and the other medic, and somebody's gotta drive that ambulance. This takes the place of a person.
And it's hard work.
Oh, yes. Well, if there's one person back there, if there's one person back there trying to do the compressions and the breathing, you don't have any time to do medications or look at what this is telling you.
You're trying to keep them alive.
You're trying, but it's, it's, it's dismal attempt at best.
Doing that or, or trying to hang on because you're going around. There's videos, I've got a video of Las Vegas Fire Department. They've implemented these on each particular ambulance. Uh, and so they did a video of them working it in the back, working on code, and they're just sloshing back and forth. Where they pan back and they're only going five miles an hour in a parking lot. But they're moving around so much because, because they're not locked in. Standing up, your, your center of gravity is, isn't working for you. They, they implement them too because of, because of the safety. They had a couple medics get seriously hurt because they were standing up doing that. Car pulls out in front of them, loses whichever, lose control. Now you've got two or three patients back there in the back because they've slipped and slid into the back cabinet. Just a, a tool that keeps them safe and, and helps the patients and, and the community.
I thought that was the most amazing thing I ever seen when I saw that, uh, I just...
That's the first demonstration of one of these I've seen, I'm very impressed with.
Can you slide your paddles in there to show?
Yeah, absolutely. You would, you would put your paddles, the only thing that should be under, you know, on the patient is gonna be, if you're gonna have anterior, posterior, you can do it anterior, lateral, you can do it that way. That's the only thing that shouldn't be under, under the particular band, um, and you can do that. With, in Europe, what they do is they plug in their monitor into the board and it senses the exact time, when the optimal time is to, to shock. So like synchronized cardioversion, when you're delivering a shock at that particular part of the S-wave, that will tell it when to deliver the shock at that right time. Because you don't want to shock an empty heart, and we'll make sure it's full, and they work together with them. FDA hasn't come along and approved that yet, but they're doing it over there. Okay, so, and they're getting great results out of it because it's just knowing exactly when, when to do that.
What's the lifespan of the battery? You say charge, charge it all the time?
Right, so the battery is a, um, it's a new lithium ion battery. The older batteries that you looked at in two thousand ten were a nickel metal hydride, and they were power hungry batteries. This, this one is a lot lighter, a lot smaller. It's not any smaller, it's just, it's just a lot lighter. And we'll give you that runtime indication on that that matches that there, which equals to about forty minutes. And that, and that's dependent on, on the person's chest resistance. So if they've got a really stiff chest or, or a weak chest, I could probably do it for an hour and twenty minutes on that guy. But if I put a human on it, it'll be about forty minutes for each, each particular battery. These batteries, um, being lithium ion, will self, they'll do the same advantages that are on the, uh, X-series. They'll condition, they'll work in, in the charger, they won't develop that memory and fail as often. Well, we're working on the first three, and then, uh, and then the other, the other seven. Hopefully, it'll, it'll be saving lives and, and, and get impressed with that. Because it, when they implement this device out there and it starts saving people, is, uh, it's really, you'll see the, the draw to it. People will really go, wow, that's amazing.
I'm impressed with the equipment, I'm not so impressed with the warranty. One year, insured, medical corporation will at no charge, at perhaps a million, to the customer, either repair or replace. That'd be under warranty number six.
First page is one year warranty?
And in the breakdown, right, he's talking about in the detail, fine print.
In the fine print.
Before you've seen that?
On the one, the warranty section. I mean, ninety days seems, I mean, the training period's gonna take half of that. If I'm reading it wrong, I understand, Greg.
Now, there, there should be a one, there is a one-year warranty on, on that.
It says... Where it says accessories and electrodes?
No, it says warranty number six.
Yeah, accessories and electrodes warranty for ninety days. So that's your, that's your sensors, your cables, your, your device, so, 'cause they're wear and tear. So anything like on the monitor that they've attached those leads, that they're pulling leads off or attached to a finger, those are gonna have a ninety-day warranty. The, the device itself has a one-year warranty.
But all the accessories, without the accessories, the machines don't do it, right?
Well, no, this, I mean, this is a reusable, a one-time use ban.
Why would the accessory don't be guaranteed warranty for ninety days? I'm just curious.
Because of the repetition and, and what they're doing. And that's on, on that particular device. This, right here, doesn't have any really accessories. This, right here, doesn't have any really accessories, the cables, that informa, if you break the set of cables in 90 days, you'll have a set on, on your desk. I mean, really, that's, if, if past 90 days, because that won't be, it's more for this stuff than the accessories and the electrodes and the connections right here.
Cause I live up at the coast, they're not exactly cheap.
Right.
The ones we have aren't cheap, anyway, we replace them.
For 90 days?
Not every 90 days, no.
And that, I mean, that could just be somebody yanking them off, you know, because not everybody, not everybody just pops them off real nice and easy. There's the wear and tear with that, because these are used quite, you know, most every call.
I've seen hospitals step, take a pair of scissors and go to remove the rest of their clothing as they do that treatment, and accidentally snip, you know, leg to the wires. Those things do happen. We've replaced a set of leads, I'm gonna say twice this year, on, on the twelve units that we have in operation.
So on the software, does that mean that we have to pay, I can't read it in here, but apparently it has software that runs the equipment?
Correct.
So do we have to pay a little on the software? And when you upgrade the software, do we get the free upgrade?
Absolutely.
Where does it say that at?
It's just one of our...
We went to, we went to do many things that people said.
No, it, it, you mean, it is free software downloads, I understand, I understand dot NIs and crawl CTs. But the software launch, the upgrades, software will be in after.
When was the last time you had a software update?
Um, on, they, they, they do it a lot.
You do one, you have to do the other?
No, no, because they're, they're separate. Like, that one just had a software update that I got on it today. And so that's a, and what it is, and you can test on the E series or the M series, when you have a software update, we would send you a card, and it's just a flash drive thing as you plug it in. I usually, when I get the latest software, I'm running around with it, if I notice that it's out of warranty, I plug it up and update the software and report back.
And we're not part of, we just box and announce it, like jailhorns and a few things that need to be brought in.
Right, you know, Zoll Medical itself, I mean, founded by Dr. Paul Zoll, he was the first one successfully to figure out a patient and case with that. And we're $570, trying to get to a 3 billion dollar company. So they're gonna stand behind everything in place.
And you've given us a 41 pound outbreak?
Yeah, with the 25, 45, 50 with the board, plus the North Carolina State contract, they get that hold on there as well. So you're getting that in addition to the North Carolina State contract pressing, which honestly is lower than any of my other territories in the stock that I've got, and I've got the four states.
David, you've used at least the same.
I've never used the, the Autopulse, no. I've used the defibrillator.
Is Zoll furnished, I've not read all the time, do you furnish the train?
Absolutely. Yep, so with that being coming, so I can, I can do the training on either of these devices, but with a large group like that, because we'll put them in that 12 and the Autopulse, what I do is I bring in our clinical deployments, and this, this Zoll doesn't cost anything. They, they come in and they, they're 10 year plus teaching paramedics. They're all accredited, have all had some sort of accreditation teaching, they come down, and we work with the shifts and how they switch through, sit down, go through everything, make sure they're comfortable with it. And then I would also bring out our Autopulse deployment specials, and she would come through and do that. After that's all said and done, we had, so we have new hires, we've got new people joining, coming over from a different service who haven't used this equipment. We have a free online learning module, where they can go inside and hit each particular thing. So as a new hire orientation, they get the same training as they got on day one. So three years down the road, they're not going, what did you tell me about this? And playing that telephone, and maybe get on there and get a seat, step by step in a video, the particular thing you want.
Can we ensure stuff like this, like a drop going down the back of the ambulance?
David, this, just help me, the reason this is coming up now is because the age of some of the equipment that they...
The age of the equipment we have now, and we have two different styles, actually we have three different styles. We have multi-phases, which is spaced out, uh, we have five phasing machines, and then we have, and there are M series, and we also have five E series. What this purchase will do, if we can do the full purchase, well, will extend our entire fleet, so that no matter what truck you win in.
You've got 12 ambulances that's in the ambulance.
We will, by the time we get our new ones, and I did hear from them, that we're looking for first, for the March, and, um, by the time we get those two, we'll have 10, we'll be back to a full fleet team, which we have 10. Um, here is CRB will be our number one, and number 12 will be our player, so that if we, if we don't have overnight shipping, or one of our defibrillators goes down for any reason, I'll have one put back in this place to keep that in support. How, how carried on my truck, and just if they have any service, that's what it is for us to do on our truck. They do have a policy that if we have trouble with one, they'll drop ship us one overnight, but we don't have overnight services, so that's a good to do that.
So the firemen receive, I mean, if any of the first responders, because they usually meet the ambulance everywhere we're going, so...
So with AEDs and...
I mean, we can afford to certainly, we should definitely have a fire department to worry about.
Right, so, and eventually, hopefully, we'll work towards that goal down, but as far as being, them being trained on it, absolutely, we could have a big class if they wanna come in and get trained on, so they are aware of it, know, know what it is, and able to see.
But they wouldn't have that equipment available to them if they're in the ambulance?
No, no.
I mean, Franklin has, you know, quadruple the cost of any other fire department, they could, what we said, considerable. I mean, really, I mean, Massachusetts, they're there before the ambulance.
We're talking about Autopulse.
Yeah, absolutely. So like, I just came from Grand County, they have, or Henderson just added one, Lenville Cashiers bought two back in November. So they're, they're in the area, and some of them are just dusting them off and bringing them back out. Now, the services that, they see this working, there's a lot of people who are there now who haven't, weren't there at the beginning, weren't accustomed to it, weren't using it. So when they start to see it being used, and seeing the results and the saves that they're getting, the technologies that are in, it should build a little bit of momentum so that frankly, fire department will wanna get something on their own. Now, the combination of the AEDs that they're using with the Zoll, and I did get a contact about one of the, one of the X series down there, they're, that's increasing their CPR form.
What do they make it?
Uh, Chalmers, oh, these are made in Colorado, and those are made in Massachusetts.
Mark, can I?
Those are in, in Colorado, and Chalmers.
Bottom line, I'm just trying to make sure that we're reading, bottom line, either. Is that the last page, the mid?
That's the last page, and they've also, I'm not sure if you got the email, but also these work, the proposal with a third party company that's worth everything, thirty, thirty-seven?
Thirty-four, eight.
Thirty-four, eight.
So we're, we're three hundred and ten percent.
So they're, they're, having that adds, you know, most value to, they're able to sell it or create it, whichever way, get value out of what you, which you're working on. We have, we have a, we have preventive maintenance program, they're gonna do this one, with this, but two of our, uh, units failed last year. One of them's on a truck, it took everyone a fair truck, but it went to preventive maintenance. There was nothing that the paramedics could have seen was wrong with that unit. They tested fine, they do a daily test, charged to 20 to 30 joules to an exhaust charge, it was lit on paper, because everything's accurate, it was, energy was not coming up to any difference. There's no way they would have known that, with preventive maintenance, one person tested that, and it's not there, and she would have, unfortunately, had a spare. If, if that unit had been on a call and attached to the person, everybody would have that. Those machines are used on every call, the defibrillator is used on every call. Now, it's not used as a defibrillator every time. It'll, it reads the heart rhythm, it takes your blood pressure, checks the valve oxygen in your bloodstream, but they will be attached on almost every patient. There are a few that would not be taken home from the hospital, or back winter, if they're attached. Everything that comes from outside hospital, you know.
Um, driving ambulance yesterday.
But we, we average, we, we had that discussion on the way here.
Cardiac arrest.
We probably average two cardiac arrests a month. Now, there are some, some that are more, and there's some...
But still, I've got, you know, that's 24, 24, yeah. Down the other side, that's full cardiac arrest, that's...
And we've had, we've had three. Unfortunately, there's a, there's a golden rule that things happen in threes, I don't know why, they always said it, um, but we're going back.
So what's your, what's your timeline on basis of something, feel like you do now for your time?
Well, we're, one or two, two top constraints. Number one is the most serious in my factor is that the equipment we have now has failed today. We have, we have stuff that is outdated, 10 years old, 12 years old, it was used when it was on. We have some newer equipment that are, is less likely to fail, but it is reaching the end of its time. That's the serious part, so I'll, you know...
Hell, is that a fit?
We're looking at the E series, and it's, it's around four years old, and five to six years is the max, so...
What's the life of this?
Between five to seven.
Years?
Yeah, a usable life, because it's all, you know, the environment, they, whatever they do with, with it in their particular environments, five to seven is a usable life. And that's also technology changes that happen over five to seven years.
Yep, that was one question I had, Jack, and he's not getting that long, I know, David, you not being in your position. I guess I see something like this as more like the computers in schools, or replacing fleet cars, that kind of, saving your life, putting on a, a cycle, replacement cycle, where you don't have to buy.
Well, you don't have to buy the whole chunk of the time, and unfortunately, we have waited so long that we need to, we need to buy the chunk of the time when the equipment is ready.
And we're ready for the budget, as you said, at one time, big, it's can't just be part of, part of budget, I said, but that's like, Jack, today, I'm hearing like that. I see the need for these, especially if you have a heart attack, but I understand, I guess, just to have any feeling, I'm asking you about why we didn't just ask, none of us for the grand one. Something like this, I would be able to replace it.
I, I agree, I agree.
It's more affordable.
With that also, but we also have to have strike, and, and the stuff that we have, even the best stuff we have on the truck is gonna be outdated next year, or at the point that it may be failed.
What, what are, what are our, what are our options?
How many units do we have now? How many temporarily do we have?
We have, honestly, we have 17 right now that we're gonna, that would send that purchase by back. And the reason we have...
Working, something you put in the unit to go to a safe.
We have 15, because we took two out of service, we took two that failed during this accident, we have 15 that we can, we can, um, the reason we have more defibrillators than we have trucks is because there was a time before these, the ways that we have now were purchased, that there was mixed money in the budget, it came down to the end of the year, we had a little bit of money left, and there was a purchase out there of used equipment, and we all cashed it, but it was the only thing we could do of time, was to have time we had and we needed extra units.
You said right there about being budget, I just think that's where this should have been all along.
Right, I agree with you, I agree with you.
I'm happy with you with that, too, we're here. To be a major Catholic, we're a little bit...
What I would like to say is to get us up to where we need to be, and then I agree, put that into a rotation, do a, do a five and five rotation.
We know that's an expense, you know, put it in the budget, we know you've got to replace vehicles, you know, you've got a lot of computers, Chris, you know, get three of them. Water up, water up to one, two, and three.
Do we lose the discount totally? I mean, you have to buy the whole pack to get the 48 man discount.
Yeah, because that's including the boards. So you get, you go revert back to, to state pricing on that, so you're really worried about the board, you're getting the board is included, which, when those come in, you're gonna see it, you're gonna see the results from it.
So if you add that, plus what we're giving for the old ones, it's $30,000.
Thirty-four, eight.
So that's $78,000. If we buy them all, it won't be crap.
Well, the 48.
Plus the, plus the yours, what?
Yeah, if you look at it in whoa, he's got us charged for the auto bolsters, but then the 48s just give us furry, so that's already discounted in that 48 price, and then you take off the 34 eight, and that's how much we have to pay.
David, I appreciate what you're doing, I know you came in and called budget year, and you were up here with the budget was delayed last night.
I, I was here last week of year, I did prepare this year.
Oh, you did? And I'd agree a lot with Ken, and I'm the new guy out of Ford here, and I know we've got some big issues facing us, and obviously, this is, I'm just glad no one said that, say one life is worth everything. I, I don't ever like hearing that, you know, you can't put a, you can't put a price on a life, but, you know, this hit a 400 or 370, whatever it's hit. And if there's some way, and I think this should have been part of the budget, you just don't let your defibrillators or your vital equipment down.
Absolutely.
And the problem is, the board, if it's budget giving, and, and they know that, we don't have a way to have no...
And the reason why we put in this year's budget that we're operating in now is because, and it's this, because this is the first year in my lifetime, of my career, that we've ever rented an ambulance. Our fleet was most important this year. We ordered two trucks this year, um, it's been a long drawn out process, and hopefully we'll get them, um, in a month, first, first, first.
David, we lifted in the long run.
Yeah, we have, and I'd like to comment on that if I could, but, but let me give you just a little bit of background, when things were going really good, five years ago, and things were rolling, and money was coming in, and backplaces expanding and so forth, there wasn't a real big cost. You've got to remember too, nineteen, 2008, 2009, I think you were probably on one of the board now, 2008, 2009, went, went, went economy, and we had a good bit of a year, something eight and a half dollars out of budget, in order to make a balance for that year, and then next year was even lean and lean, and so we didn't even incorporate money from capital out later, schools, and then we cut all the, some of the capital, the budget money we could, in order to maintain until we could get our better, our better footing. And so there's been a cutback, and you could tag the skin and so forth on capital equipment, and Captain made this far analysis, and we had five two this year, and if we get those on a rotating basis, I'd be surprised if we can see some more in the budget next year. But those things that you're, that, that they need to have replaced, this year, which part, if we were able to do that this year, replace six, I think, or eight, six, six control cars and two ambulances. We need to do that on some of this expensive equipment, because it won't last forever. And especially when you come to talk of safety things, because these are, these are life or death issues here, and, uh, it's just really important that we have, we have the equipment and the vehicles and the trained personnel to get out there to try to save lives. So in, in a perfect world, it'd be better to say, well, let's just wait, pretty this end, we do the budget this year and so forth, but the only concern that we have, that I have, I think David's impressed, we may not get this opportunity at this particular rate, at this particular length, and our, our stuff is wearing up so fast, I'm not sure we can catch up. It's hard to come up with 370, something like that, now, dollars, I think, more, and I would agree on that. And we've used a lot of fund balance money, we could use some fund balance money, and purchases are part of these, are all of them. But I think one of the things we ought to look at is, uh, these things are gonna last five to seven years, and we need to spread that thing out over a budget period, kind of, we do that for, for, uh, fifty-nine months, install and purchase on, on this, on this equipment. I'll have to talk to some of our bankers and see what kind of rate we get, you know, we got one point... You know, we got one point, six. Computers. And, and we could do something like that. We don't have the numbers here for you tonight. We might put those together and give you two or three options on how you might be able to acquire these things without putting a tremendous drain on the current year's budget or tremendously comforts on next year's budget. So if we can take a few days to put that together, we can bring that back to you all. And let's you know what your options would be if you want to pursue acquiring these, uh, these pieces of equipment.
That's what I'd like to see.
And, and it's exactly what, it's exactly what you're saying, spreading it out and putting it on that replacement cycle. You're getting used to that, that up front. And that's a replacement cycle coming year six, seven, eight, and a couple other times. So it's in the budget like you, like you're saying.
So you don't got sixty-five hundred dollars from the. That's it. That's what people through. Like that?
And is this something we could do within our, is this budget, we find that makes something, what, what are our options to do?
Well, if we went ahead, if we went ahead and, no, we, we're talking about, you know, short term. This is short term, long term, what it is over the life, actually, it'd be shorter than the life of this equipment. But, uh, we could do that and if we actually got the equipment ordered, if you're going to lead time, it's not sitting on the shelf.
Right, that is.
So it takes a while to do that. By the time we went through the process and worked this out and had a lender who was going to up on the money to pay for these over the next four and a half years. We're probably not going to be making statements on that until July first anyway.
After that, yeah, we'd do a finance and we'd do it in arrears, we'd do somebody who came in arrears. And let's just say we closed the finance deal in March, just to throw out a moment. Then we wouldn't have a payment due once that came out, which is new budget. Does that make sense?
Well, that is.
We would do this.
That would be, that would be just first.
How long this time, but how long the deal, you are. Big good.
It goes to twenty-eight, so.
February.
Get the, get the free equipment.
We just had more. In a year and one day, this thing right. You lack your car. I hear you, I probably, you share with, if I, if I, if I know the deal too. Anyway, uh, so there's no way you can build it back or something like that?
No, you can, if we have, we, we repair all of our own equipment up in Jumpford, up in Massachusetts. So if there was a, if there was something that came under, under warranty within that period of time. They'll send it up there, it'll be checked off and works and fixed. And it goes back through the same processes as we will be. So they make sure that it's checked back off and resurfaced. No, for repair? No, you repair like it would be if your car, just to say if your car broken, something happened.
Main brain.
Bit explodes.
Bit explode, what's the cost to pay?
That's a good question, I haven't seen one do that. It would probably, probably expensive with a loss because it explodes. But, but realistically, but realistically.
If, if, if the main brain, if, if, if right.
Yeah.
But, I mean, give me a call.
That, I, I couldn't say, I don't, I mean, honestly, I don't want to throw out a number that's incorrect. Because I don't work in the service department and, and do that. I work on that front end.
I think it goes on, when I was, if I drops it out back at the handles over there, I'd try to replace it.
Well, we're, we're looking at five year period. Well, it nerves us out, hopefully, anyway.
Well, each, each unit, okay, so if you, if, if that's, if that's the concern is that you do that one year, one day. You can add additional warranty to that. It's not, it's not anybody today, you can't ever put a warranty back on.
You can do a warranty up to five years.
Yeah, you can put a warranty up to actually six, so you get seven four years warranty.
And how much would that cost?
That is about a thousand dollars, monitor, three years. So twelve thousand dollars a year, you could put that on.
Four, three years.
Right, so, so it's a.
Again, that's our, been quite. Can find one left there.
Just, just so you'll know, Jeff is a traditional being, and I'll let him sit, but I thought you could tell us a lot more about this, any of us though. Because he is, he is a certified, he is a.
I was going to, I just recognize Jeff James out here, he's a, uh, EMS supervisor at Holland, he's been with us since thirty-four years.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Jeff and I worked together for four years. I think during that year, we worked in two booths. David, I, I would love to have twelve, but when I consider the funds right now, I also have in my mind that we work, uh, five trucks full time. We have three in front of us, and I have one in Holland, one in LA. And if we got, uh, put one in chariots, if you are being one of yours, that's seven. So we've got five that are basically sitting here. Maybe used, maybe not, and they're used, I understand they're used, but are, are, if, if, let's just say if we, if we get by seven or six. Do we have six units to make up those other ambulances now that are working in functions and potentially work six in a bunch next year? Maybe you also got more rotational bases, or I have it.
We, we have potential, the, the E-series right now is the only, is the newest model we have, we have five of them. Like I said, they're, they're aging out and they're to the point that they need to be replaced. Um, in an ideal world, uh, if. If, if purchase twelve can't be done, then to make up for twelve, you know, those five would make it.
I'm not saying it can, I'm just saying about, well, best year and talk about our options here. I, I would like to see five purchased, and I would love to see five that are all of us, and I'd love to see one that's new up too. I don't know how that goes, and, and nothing against, uh, I'm just not as ill, but, or, I know we've been using Zolenskyy in this county. For the whole fourteen, fifteen years I've been in this county. Are there other companies and have you, have you looked at those?
There are other companies, um, but there are companies that are there, don't have the right record with this company here.
I, I know there's a comfort level here with our paramedics too, because they've been, they've been using a little bit. You're going to ask the question.
So, actually, actually, um, it's, it's old products that we have right now have given us good service. The AEDs that we purchased to give out to the fire departments and having the young guilt. And then those are used out on public and it's a seamless match. When the paramedics show up, they had their own patient, they go trade it to those pads and then repeat us some service. Our curmats are for me, but I'm sure every, every company does with strength. Other services are, are an option. It's not, uh, professional opinion, it's not.
And if I could interject real quick, there, there isn't anything, and I, there isn't anything on those other, the other tubes manufacturers, um, that is better than this. They don't have anything more. This is the top of what has the most size of any of those others. So there's not an advantage or disadvantage to us in that way. Your actually, your advantage is by having a pressing heart pump in a smaller tire.
We have always tried our best to keep every annual stock of tech inside.
Sure.
Always felt that. Just because you might be the sixth. Now, I'm worried about, we've got five trucks that are staying. Because you're number six, then you get something here. And I, I think that everybody in our county deserves this, I'm here. And you guys, you mess with it, I've, I've been bad about holding off fine equipment. If I can't put it on every truck, I'll put it on the future.
How much do you have, what's the?
In non-keptal equipment, I have about four thousand dollars. Capital equipment, which is the.
I know, I know we had so much of our, our ambulance too. I know, it seems like, I don't remember everything since I've already lost.
If it's all been allotted, for, for all of our, about two thousand dollars, I think, which has been physical for different, um, one being taken out of staff.
Jump, what you did, yeah. You said in twenty-eight, we think if, if this board, I mean, if we're going to put some numbers together, we could look at different packages. What kind of enterprise orders you get like zero point one two. But I think you don't be far to this horse, but in our packages, well, we could, the demo might be a low rate. It's good, it's good. It's all, you know, everything's good. I mean, I think you, I think I'm just thinking, I just told Kevin two things, I believe this, if this has been a place, I believe there might be a life for that. I, I really, I think that you don't have. Going right, right here, this field. And I believe, I believe had this equipment been looked in, in place, it was, you know, but that's what you, I think it'd been out of view of, you know, that. On the board.
My, my recognition is, we can't vote on something that's not concrete or in front of, we, we have.
We'll, we'll make a good decision for you.
And give us some options, let's look at, I'm ready, I'm ready to deal with this replacement pattern thing, if we can somehow get into that, we're not dealing with this. Or somebody else is not dealing with this.
And I, I agree with you, and that's where we are on ambulances, we bought two this year, and if we continue to buy two. And we just, we don't, we're not buying twelve ambulances this year, you know, so we're buying seven, two, and two.
Jack, you already, you're guilty for coming this.
Yeah, actually, if, 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 I think we could, we might be able to get them, they're fresh, we need to get it for next week. I bet you're planning on continuing next week, and, and, and it's possible that we could.
If not, if we, let's say we decided to buy this, the second week of March, and we still.
Yeah, if, I mean, if it's, if, you can't put it, it's getting well along, no, I can't say for sure. But if you can, if you can get to, if there's a. If you tell me, you tell me that it's going to be a thirteen, I'll go, you know, to my boss and say that, they're saying it's going to be this time. Because they've got to get everything together. Now, the, the problem is that the, the, the equipment being traded in has an expiration date on my, on mine. So that is, we go past, we're playing this, the, the date game, it ends up changing what they're, what I can give and get. And then that just grows.
March, that's right, it doesn't break in next month.
So, so, I mean, that's, if we, if you think you can have it done by then, I will make, I will have been trying to redo that by.
We can have the number, and I think that was most discussion.
We, uh, we beat March twelve.
You go to ten this week.
Yeah, but I'm saying if they don't have it by then, if they have March twelve. I'm a philosopher, that's his problem. Uh, Jeff, you listened to this conversation, Mark, you had a thought on this, on your day today.
I know we live.
Doesn't have to be a night, but look, think about it.
But I said the other night that we can have somebody that works and that's speaker, or you're the one that has to, I don't know how to use the equipment, but to have the citizens' lives in, you know, in that ambulance. Who we can update it.
Yeah, I'll do a great job.
But I can attest to it, because I got used to one here a while back, and they do, but you have to all that stuff and all those leads on there, as soon as they get you, as soon as they get you down and get you ready, they're sticking the, where they call those things.
Official name. Sticky band.
Sticky band.
Five dollar stickers.
Put those on inflectively, four, ten, so.
When I first saw that thing, I guess that was my life. That's the most impressive thing I've ever seen, I mean.
That, you know, like I said, and that's what I saw when I was hiring in the going on my life. That is cool, I didn't know anything about.
But I wonder, where was this at in my time of passage CPR? You know? No, but you, you probably blowing on the dummy, doesn't.
All right, are we good to get information back?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The other, the other thing, oh, we got, sure, this, uh, we're going to talk about staffing this one minute.
Um, that's the other thing that we brought to you at the, at the meeting was to, one was to change our staffing shifts to twenty-four seventy-two. That will take place on the twenty-four first. We also, from the point of this, twenty-four first month, that'll be the next table. That's our existing, our existence that is going to go to.
If we are, we are talking about.
And that's all, that's the thing is, um, what we were researching, and what, what.
That's first time we're starting that.
Okay, and, and, and it's been a logistical, trying to figure out who can do work. And plus, we have started on table that, so we can get it done by the eleven, so we are going to get it. The other staffing issue is we have a truck right now, it stays at hours off at six a.m. or six p.m. And there are four people who staff that. Jack and I've had the discussion, and we've also talked about backup crews going to locations and base lengths and shore. By bringing that truck up to a twenty-four hour truck, if it's all right into the twenty-four seventy-two, it's, everybody else is working, twenty-four people. Creating four positions.
Have we given three, four, five, six, seven trucks in a day? Twenty-four hours a day? So you always have crew, right now, right now, we have three trucks in a day, six a.m., six p.m., seven a.m., we got two trucks.
How many employees are you down now before you do the?
Right now, I have two back to spots you work currently at.
That's before you do the. You got some for retirees, some? Probably.
The number keeps changing, but as of right now, I know three that have, are about to retire.
Say we have trouble filling up positions.
Um, our hope is that the, on the twenty-four seventy-two, and depending on what position is with the spring step issue. The one spring step in our, in our pay evaluation. Uh, hopefully, those two things combined will come high stick.
I mean, one to Georgia, we're living, we're living one to Georgia, another that.
Yeah, he, yeah, he went, he went to Atlanta. That was, there were two issues there. Um, he's, he's always wanted to be a fighter, and he wants to get paid fighter. And I, I applaud him for going through training, he's done, and he wants to better himself, and that's right. He's, he's a paramedic, and down there, he can get up, he can get paid fighter.
Yeah, Mr. James, I've been there for. It's your second week, you.
I'm sorry, what?
Second week, you say?
Oh, yeah.
Um, staffing the ambulances, we have thirty-six positions.
That's music. The hour rate is. I don't know what it is, I'll look it up, but, uh, we, we, we might have, you know, with the base rate, depends on if they're paramedic or ID or whatever, we don't.
Starting placing paramedics with them.
Basically, going to review on paramedics.
What do you have to go to, which, David, where, where, where?
Huh?
What do you work at, though?
I work at an oxtail, but I've got a, got, uh, West Virginia on my, on. Well, thank you, thank you. I'm up to you from. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Some of them are. They're in March in West Virginia.
I think this restructuring department, I appreciate what you have to. But I agree with Kevin, all of this should be worked into a budget process. If we come in the middle of the year, we'll spend three hundred thousand, what am I, and I'm not picking on you, David, I appreciate what you did, I'm, I'm new at this game. And, or not gang, I'm new at this, whatever it's called. But coming here every month and to spend a half million or a million dollars on unbudgeted money, how do we ever have a control? And I'm talking, I'm talking to this whole room, how do we have a control? How do we know what we're spending? How do we know what it takes if you do it in budget? Pardon?
Because you do it in budget process.
That's what, that's the purpose of the budget process, these budgets should last a lot. And I'm not, I don't mind sending you all that, I, I stay away anyway. But, uh, the company every month have to go through another department and reorganizing and funding and, and budgeted ads. I just think all this ought to be worked into, into the upcoming, and I think, as we said, you're starting the budget process. Good luck to you. Good luck to you.
Well, the only problem you run into, and it's, it's good through this process from here to U S A, not everything falls right into, to the time period that we really shoot for. Some, some things come up here every year that we're planning on, some things come up that really need to be addressed. But we don't, we don't ever go into anything in the middle of the year without understanding that it has an impact on this year's budget and next year's budget as well, this is the thing. So, we don't, uh, I don't know if you get the impression that we're stringing stuff up in the middle of the year just because we want something different. There's got to be a real need for it, and it's got to be based on something that benefits the people in the county here, where there's life safety issues, whatever. And I know it sounds like a lot of this stuff has come up here recently, but there's stuff that's been talked about and put off more than one budget time. But, uh, and you just, sometimes you just can't buy what you want to, when you, when you need it, and you have to wait till that time this year. But what we're looking at here, I think, especially when it comes to EMS services, is, uh, we start off with this year's budget, is that was the top priority of this year's budget, is emergency services. And that's why we have a lot of expenditures in there for ambulances. We bought two brand new ambulances that cost how much?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand dollars, and patrol cars and so forth, and, and, and all that, but there's. This is an evolving process, and it would be really good to be able to do it at the beginning of the year, not change anything during the year. That, that's how ideally, the way I'd like to do it. But sometimes things come in the middle of the year, uh, that, that, that didn't get in budget process during those three months, that we're putting that budget, three, four months, we're putting that budget together. But there's still, there's still priorities. What we would, what we would do is whatever the board wants to do is, is if we can put something to effect, we know this is a priority, because it's a life safety issue. And we'll make it work for this year, and start it in the next, in the next budget year. But what we're doing basically now is saying, this is a, a need in the county. And it's a need that's going to be there now, it's going to be there in July. And if we can work in the budget process beginning in July, we don't have any process between now and then, all that works out fine. But if we're going to have to do it sooner or later, we think we ought to bring it to your attention to say it's an issue we need to study right now. And if there's a way to put it in place before the budget runs out, we'd like to do that. If not, because of the restraints, or the restraints on money, then we'll do like we've always done in the past. We put that off until we're financially able to do that without putting up a bigger perk on the current budget. Because one of the jobs that I have as budget director for the county is supposed to be what I do. And I'm very conscious of, uh, of the strains and limitations on that. And we've done a good job, I think, holding on to our financial resources as well as we can. Uh, but when it comes to a life safety issue, uh, we think that's not a priority, and we would like to do this sooner. But if we can't do it sooner, we would like to get authorization to go ahead and work towards that in budget process. So, we'll, we'll do what the board wants to do, but this is such a critical issue for life safety, we thought we need to bring that in at this time. The, and not wait till we go through the budget review process, we can actually get started until probably sometime later. I, I, I probably, I probably said more than, I should have said on that call, but it's, uh, it's an ongoing process all year long for the budget. But we're very careful not to, uh, encourage expenditures on the budget without looking into revenue side and make sure it's not going to put the overall budget into some number. So, we're very conscious of that.
I think we agree with you in the process. We've had few things, we've been wrapping some kind of on, that it's been one time, I, who, that, that's something that, that's once every forty years. That's not budgeted, I, that's, we're out of jack, out of one mouth. That's one thing. We did that in the middle of the year because if you, if you can get it done, um, the paramedic thing is always, is once every forty, I think that's not necessarily budgeted. So, I, I'm seeing, I'm seeing you in prayer, but I think, I think we would all be aware of that, that if it's ongoing expenses, it needs to be handled as much as possible during budget process. We can discuss it. I thought we could.
There was one disagreement, I think that's, that's the way it ought to be, and that's the way we're trying to do that all. But it's, it's a good point, and I can understand, I, I, I agree with Sheriff that when you get into these things, uh, like all this stuff that's going up in the middle of the year. It's a little unsettling, and it's unsettling, may not be in this thirty-five years, but, uh, but we, we try to work towards the budget process, keep that, that table in mind, not try to overload. If something comes up in the middle of the year that we really like, but it's not something we actually have to handle, because it's not a life safety issue, and want more than life. So, we'll look at that there in budget time, still not going to be needing money and that right now. But we really have some, Mr. Sheriff says, we do have some big one time benefit areas that forward.
Very sound, I think, if you find that this thing reminds you, you'll see very little reoccurring power. Kind of like the, I mean, if you do, one time thing, not reoccurring. That's what, to be petulant every year and have to handle it here? How many years are up in petulant?
You speak to me.
I, I think it is, I think that opposite, but you don't have quite as much luxury to keep things updated on rotation. To be petulant, in fact, and that's what we did over the throw clock, we held it back. Now, it's my, this is, and it's, you play for us in a way, and if you could be, you know, we struggle with this on other things.
Well, it does, and sometimes you don't have any choice, even though you really need something, something, you don't have any choice except to put it off. And we missed one year, but I'm finding anything is good, I'm glad I'm here. And I know that he does things in there, so what we didn't find is that we didn't feel like we had enough latitude in the budget to do that, but I put the rest of the budget jeopardy. So, it's, 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 it's a good possibility to do it, and we probably concentrated it during the budget preparation time. We'll get more into that over the next couple of months, but that's when it really ought to be addressed. Dave and I have had this conversation, and I have a community here, when somebody says that they're asking for something, and I say, well, I don't think we can afford that this year. They said, well, that's what you told me last year.
Our spending over the last ten years has never gone bad, right?
Our spending has gone bad.
Actually, it has, oh, yeah. Yeah, since, uh, two thousand and seven.
It did a high, in about, uh, oh seven, it's dropped here since.
Forty-eight thousand, I would extend to oh seven, and, I mean, uh, oh seven was forty-eight million, and twelve is fifty-eight.
No, that's wrong.
That's what's reflected in the, uh, uh.
No, I mean, you might, you might see some ice cream money.
We, we get the way down that.
One of the reasons, one of the reasons, here, here, there's a lot of variables in there, one of the reasons the budget went up this year, we have a lot of pastor money that came from the state. That's not really increased the county.
We don't get that.
I look at that, I don't. Our budget down is several million dollars less than it was.
I know, too.
About four.
About four point four million.
He was speaking, he was speaking to me in the nap.
I was.
Right out of that.
Rich setting them up on.
Yeah, we mentioned those.
Before.
I played against him. Did I get that?
I'm.
The topics were already.
Just go ahead and sit on top of.
I think it'd be, I think it'd be helpful, uh, Paul, that, when we finish, or maybe just start, just finish up the comprehensive annual financial report. That gives you, uh, all the last four, five years of, 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 while you're in the report. Let me get you a copy of that, that ought to be very good.
That'll be given. In the whole, that's, that's.
I always talk this.
I mean.
Which was, the big labor or the least needed machines, I guess, just about.
Yeah, so that's all.
All the fat.
Use.
Well, we're only going to get three of them, you know, those are free, they're in person.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I'm usually.
They.
So, just going to get a few.
And then try and let, see, this really.
Yeah.
They guys. And they will say, yeah, go on.
What they keep talking about is.
Okay. A T D A, everything's broken down.
Yeah. We took out the side rack, but there was basically a lot of.
He needs to be.
Sir. If we were to ask the board to let us do this.
It's a T D A.
But that's now.
You're just chairman.
Additional, that's probably what they want to have, so all we want to do is put together a plan to see how we can afford to go ahead and make that, that third crew, right, on the full line, twenty-four seventy-two crew. What that would do, would give us, all of our crews would then be on the same kind of ship, that would give us extra backup, uh, from six P M. to six A M. for both Nantahela and Highlands. And also give us the ability to have four ships that provide us one for every twenty-four hour ship that, uh, that we have. We have four, and those are four big teams, and they'll all work the same shift basically all the time. So, that'll, that'll allow us to do that. So, what we're saying is, if you.
You can do that too, because.
If we can come up with a way to do that, fund that, without going and dropping somebody else's money, or, or creating a, uh, an expenditure that's going to come back and haunt you next year. If we can do that, figure out a way to put those boats home, they'll live with them what we're going to live with them. We're asking that that is something that y'all would be agreeable to let us do.
Right.
Because I think it would be really, especially, our, our, our big problem on backup for Nantahela and Highlands is probably after six o'clock. Because if you get two trucks on duty here, one doing it on the run, and one's on the transport or whatever, you don't really have anybody to back them up at night. You don't have a third truck, and then you call.
Well, yeah, we're just having three trucks and.
Or two trucks and one.
We agreed to recreate that with the board, make that change, and if you can do it within the existing budget, then that's, that's your option. So, that's, to me, that's administrative thing.
But that'd be our goal, to try to figure out, and if we can't do that, we'll let you know we can't do it. That doesn't, that doesn't mean it's not important, probably do, but we'll let you know we can do it, and let the budget.
You're not asking for additional money or a contract or anything different, so that's not a.
I'm asking, I'm asking if, if you see any profit, if we can do it within what we have, uh, I don't have any problem with it. I think it's just going to make a most supportive vision operation.
Yeah, that's not, we're not increasing the budget, we're not signing the contract. Mr. Derek, support. Unless I miss.
No, that's not.
Okay. All right, so.
I'm part of the main station.
I put in.
You look at all the number thing, and it all. Thing, we're running. Okay, well, we, we got the amended.
Nope.
Don't you play.
Go with that.
Yeah.
Capital outlay.
You want to do that?
I can.
Or I can.
Sure, start forward. Um, as you can see in your agenda packet, uh, for category one improvements, the school currently have hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars that the commissioners granted to them. All they're wanting to do is take twenty-one thousand, four thirty-five out of the, out of the Franklin High School addressable renovations, which is category one, and just create another category one expenditure, which is Franklin High School baseball field upgrades. And of course, several representatives from the school are here, and I'm sure they can. Can I answer any questions exactly what they're doing to the baseball fields?
I can serve the answer there.
Sorry.
Another patient. Like this money is far, if you solve the batting facilities and the practice facilities in the Franklin High School. That's, you know, we've worked with, with, uh, Randy on this, and, and of course, uh, Super General Baldwin to speak to. We tried to find a way over the past two years to figure out a way to do this, uh, to improve those facilities, and, uh, thanks to Angie's work, and, and some other folks' work, and, of course, Super General Baldwin. And the folks, this is what they, they hope that we give them, at least some practice facilities available.
And I think the discussion is reached, you can, the folks at the high school, like Jay Brooks, ones involved a day and day, we're like, we, we don't need all this money. We need the sixty-six to finish what we're doing, but we can't do, if there was something else, it wouldn't have made it worse. Am I overstepping that?
I, I think that, um, anticipated costs of some of the renovations that they walked around were a little bit higher than anticipated, and so we had a little more money to expect from that.
And do you need a motion? Yeah, and this is, this is just, there's no additional money here, this is transferred.
And do you think you don't add to that?
Just let them move it around. I think it's something that, uh, for brands, uh, corporations getting ready to go, we're going to submit purchases tomorrow, so I need to get started. I'll see if it's coming up on us pretty quickly.
And this, and this, they wrote for a liaison meeting, and we talked about their major agreement, and the school board did, so, so it was, no, no addition, no addition to that one.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, amend the capital outlay request as outlined in the agenda, and the, with the transfer of the money as outlined in the document.
We have motion to second in discussion. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then we have, uh, as part of the renovation at the Highland School, uh, I think, uh, in places country, it's going to lay us on, we'll need to, uh, go ahead with asbestos removal. And I, I guess the reason that's on the, uh, the, the group plan and all that, this needs to be done as prior to that job beginning.
Yeah, this is, uh, I, 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 I'm going to, I'm going to preface by saying, the board, this board already passed a reimbursement resolution, doesn't be paid out proceeds of the renovation process. But we need to get this asbestos removal done first, before they start the renovation process.
And here's the blue one, this whole time.
Yes, it's the blue that has asbestos in it, it's all got that. We have a window of opportunity to get that, close to that out during the spring break. Be around Easter.
You're asking us to.
We're asking y'all to let us go ahead. I think it will not exceed fifty thousand dollars, hopefully less than that. And we're asking the board to let us go ahead and get a contractor, Wilford, go through bids, and, uh, get a contractor to go ahead and, uh, move that asbestos during that break time, perhaps, so that when the renovation gets underway.
Is that right?
This spring, this spring break.
Wait in March twenty.
By that, I'm saying, we, we can't approve a contract, and that's what we don't have.
Well, you might be able to by next week. We're asking the authorization to expand up to fifty thousand dollars for asbestos removal for the Highland School, that you offer the contractor with, so we'll get that underway before the actual renovation.
And that money is.
It can be the enterprise.
We've got to do it anyway, if we don't do it now, it's going to delay all the process.
Close the jack, it'll be a bargain. Okay. So, we have motion to second to approve, uh, removal of asbestos in Highland School up to fifty thousand dollars, now price can make. With the understanding that that will reverse that. And that, that's how to do.
And I think, and, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to make a first clear of the public, this is non-tribal asbestos. It's not, it's just not, it's in the blue, and so, where anybody's panic, talks about, you know, tribal and non-tribal asbestos, the tribal culture. Well, this ain't nothing, I mean, it. So, but it's not nothing that's going to be airborne, there's no particles airborne, but they still put on their mask, and I, 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 I don't know.
And they can't do it with big ones built, so then I.
We have a motion to second in discussion. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Obedience. That motion passes. Uh, with, combined with that same project, we are required to, if you have a process, check their, their local agreement between the school board and, and us regarding the Highland School. And let me say this, I know the legislative council, that they want states to pass laws where you can do projects like this where the county actually takes the property's ladder with bar money on it, and they were talking, talking about, Derby County.
Wake.
Wake County, and we said, we ought to do that.
I'll.
Said, what? You know, the next question, and this was in the meeting, it's a big meeting. Sure, we've done it a year, do you want to back this school board? Does the county bar money to build it, to allow it to get better infrastructure? Oh, we didn't know you could do that. Second thing they asked us, why have you gotten possession of that property? And you put that into your recreation department, have you recreation? I said, we've been doing that for years. Yes, we've, we've done that, apparently, we work together better than they do that.
I think that's.
That blew me away.
Well, this is following that, but they have no communication, you know, from school board, committee.
Fight with commissioners, they sue each other, anyway, we.
That's the key, is good.
Move somewhere else and see how they do, do, do it back there.
All the guy around Morgan's, well, worse, but that, that's, they turn off.
Anyway, that, that's your local agreement, they apparently don't know how to do it in Lake County, just, uh, check their test.
Um, members of the board, I have distributed a proposed interlocal agreement between the county of Macon, Macon County for the education. Uh, this has been worked on, uh, by myself. This has been worked on by myself and John Henning Jr. It is modeled very much like the interlocal agreement that was done for the Iowa or K-4 school, as opposed to a construction project, it's a renovation project. Other than that, it is essentially the same, the dollar amounts are different, obviously. But in a nutshell, what this does is it requires the school board to convey the properties that are described in this interlocal agreement to the county. The county to in turn work in conjunction with the school board to come up with architectural plans and specifications for a renovation project that are satisfactory to the school board, and then basically convey the property to the school, or to the county, run the school. The county will in turn do the renovation project, use the property as collateral, as we discussed earlier this evening, for the loan, and during the loan period, the county will lease this property back to the school board for use as a school. It is a nominal lease payment, ten dollars or a hundred dollars a year, something like that, it's not a big sum of money. But it's a lease hold arrangement for enduring the term of the loan. At the end of the loan, the property is reimbursed to the school. But what that enables us to do is to borrow money on favorable rates, at favorable rates, and to implement these projects and oversee these projects in cooperation with the school. Avoids the need to do volunteer.
You know, I'd recommend we do this, but motion in. We have motion in a second in discussion. All in favor say aye. Owe. That passes. Check when you move over to the way you can.
Joe Brown would love, Joe Brown would love to have that.
This, this interlocal agreement is, is a great agreement. When you have a county that works well with the school board, and a school board that works well with county. If you didn't have that relationship, this piece of paper is not all that great.
I agree. The next item we have is the Iowa Valley Elementary Playground in Quicken. We have Mr. Cleveland, that's Gary Brown, is that right?
Yes.
Is he here with his principal?
Yes, Mr. Edgar Britton is our PTO president, and she's ready to come and. I had something to tell you guys, just to sit and do it. And I've got a suggestion, if I might be so bold, please take this with spirit and focus and hunger. If you wanted to shorten things, and just what you were saying, take a couple of these benches and put them back here, and the chairs.
Good idea, Gary.
Gary, you should have had to set, if you'd have sat on before, put those cushions on there, you would have.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was why I got off there, that was.
That's what I designed, Gary.
I'll make this brief, and this is a simple request, and again, it's another request asking for funding the Iowa Valley School, of course, as you know, open this current school year. And I want to say publicly thank you to this board and all who had a part in making that happen. I was nervous this summer when we were trying to hurry and get there, Dad kept trying to reassure me, and I kept thinking, I don't think I'll do this right, you know, and we made it, and we're in, and just right now, people are at home there. And I think it's taken a lot of time, you know, you can put your hands on your stuff in an old place where you've been there a while. And it's taken us a while to be able to find our stuff and run it over, and we appreciate this board and anybody who's had any work toward putting us in that new building. It's beautiful, we're enjoying it. For recent playgrounds, too. I think typically, that's what it'd be, you know, some sort of contingency type thing, and with a hope and expectation that after the building is done, and all the bills paid for, there's enough to cover some of the furnishings and equipment, and it's not been the case. But our PTO with Mr. Britton and others like her has really pitched in the last part of our time at Calwee School, and done the first part of this year, and he presented a check a couple of weeks back to the Macon County School Board for fifteen thousand dollars. That's a lot of money for a PTO in the community of the science of Iowa, because they work really hard in supporting the communities and schools. It's just, it's just really amazing. But we were, we're asking the board if you guys could to back us for that. We can raise another fifteen, twenty, thirty thousand dollars over time, and eventually get a piece of playground equipment, but it will take us some time. We're asking you to pitch in, what amount, I think Mr. Bill may be interested in purchasing. And it boils down to, for your part, not, an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, if we go with a wood mulch kind of thing that you typically see in playgrounds, an amount not to exceed forty thousand if we go with a rubber mulch. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, and I think that's the way that goes. I prefer the rubber mulch, liability, you're okay either way, but that wood has ten to six seven. Rubber tends to hold up longer over time, and I think that would be some money else.
That'd be thirty-five?
That would be the fourth. And thirty-five, again, would cover what the rubber mulch.
Well, I'm gonna say this, in, I was involved in, I was, I personally had been involved in building services, but I was surprised that wasn't even in the budget, I didn't know that was like that. So I was surprised with what we're in.
But what we're talking, we're talking about, I mean, when we cut from the line, we didn't line very close on the total loan.
I understand, I'm just surprised, the ones that I was involved in.
It was interesting, I mean, we talked about it, and we tried to work the end of it, but we couldn't, but it moved along, hey, we just couldn't do it. We hoped it would come back in contingency, but.
Another thing that sucked out a lot.
I did talk to Jack, there was more than enough contingency, even from figuring holding back. Possible contingency on a couple of situations, we've still got enough to fund this, and I think we can do it. The money's already there, this is money that's already vested, it's already in an account.
Is the ground ready, is it prepared, part of the playground now?
Really, as prepared as it can be, I mean, it's flat and level, and it wouldn't even be any more raised in just a matter of two months. Down there, you guys have been there, but if you're, if you're looking out the library windows, I guess, it's the best way to fly back and out, or pull it left, left side, or whatever, it's more than a corner there, trying to leave a flat field space.
Let me ask this, Mr. Chairman, in the place we're sitting up here. With this rubber. After soon, the deal built, he's going to land small, move that stress back there. Would you or anybody else want to know how much longer it'll take?
It's quite, that's how, that's how making.
And I think it's R T J.
R T J, and there's folks who's helping them build three bounds.
That's something, it's safe.
Still, that really is, that's what we're good at.
Now, definitely, Jack, I can use to make the cattle water, the monkey bars as well.
Is this request comparable to what other schools have?
It's a start, you know, I look at R T J, they've been there for years, and I think their PTO was just.
They had, on both those schools, there was basically, like, I would say, equivalent to this, that was in the plan. What happened, those schools have been there, and that was South Lake's been there since thirteen years. So they have added to it, this remote course in South Lake.
I'm seeing, you know, that those places are basketball goals and concrete courts and stuff, and we don't have that.
We'll have to look.
Well, it's hidden, it would be at the expense of the field space.
I don't think it's a responsibility of the community, as you pay your taxes, you send your kids to school. And it irritated me when I came to the Grand Bell's meeting, my wife's niece was sitting over the porch, jar of dick and money for playground equipment. The hair stood up on my bed, building twelve, fourteen million dollars to do. And we bought this when Ronnie Bill was around, we put playground equipment out there one time, we put air issues in.
And both schools, and I'm in Cali and Iowa.
The community always comes to the call, but the plan of project, it just didn't have to be outdated money to buy it. But basically, we're about to tie a little base, the kid's gonna stand around the playground, irritating. And I think that Iowa deserves whatever the schools got, and I don't think it should be a responsibility of the community provided. You do that in formal terms. So if this is phase one, phase two, whatever, it needs to be rolled up to standard. Somebody will notice and go, it might help to get out of there, and we all go to be responsible. We're better than PTO, it's, it's a thankless job sometimes, but.
But you're starting to feel from what your schools started with, you need to do for, between what they're right there.
That's a start, you know, don't let, I mean, those children have gotten that discipline. And I think the school, the children, the communities deserve it.
I think, I think that you exactly right following, but I think that should be said, too, that you can't think enough of the folks in the community who raised this money, and they weren't asked to do that by the county, they did that on their own. And then, and then they did, told them they wanted to do it, and I absolutely appreciate it. We were going to have to figure out in some way to come up with some money to put that playground equipment out there, and when it was built, that superintendent said, we'll need to do it until after the spring comes, but during that time, now the school's open up till now, the community is going out and doing a tremendous job without anybody asking them to do it on their own. And my kids will die over in Calway too, and they're hooked, and I know the PTO, and you guys work so hard. I don't think we can praise you enough for what you've done for this, and I think the county, we'll have to figure out some way to come up with whatever it takes. And if y'all had to raise this fifteen thousand dollars, we would have had to figure out some way to come up with another fifteen thousand dollars to do it. So my hat's off to you, and I appreciate what you've done, but I haven't been asked to do it, and you should be permitted for a job well done. And, and Mr. Chairman, I know that we can find enough money in the budget to cover the balance of what they need, provide that playground equipment out there, if the board's willing to do that.
The money's already there.
We do need a budget minimum to kind of shuffle around. Can I ask you a question, Mr. Brown, just for clarification on you guys exactly, I'm gonna vote on, if that's okay. Liz Products was the preferred vendor, right? And so you're wanting to take out the wood fiber service and use the rubber mulch instead of?
Yes.
Okay. So, and, and we don't have budget sales tax, I think your number is a little higher than mine, but we have our sales tax. Whatever it requires, since they contributed fifteen thousand, there's thirty-four thousand ninety-six dollars that will have to come from the county. And that can come out of that contingency line out of Iowa.
Most of the thirty-five thousand dollars.
A motion in second, all in favor, oh, we need discussion. Thank you for watching.
They never done the sessions, too.
We all have this sort of.
When Paul and I went to do, our children went to Cali and Iowa, we, I think we raised about that fifty thousand dollars. We are conditioned both schools, we broke up with both schools. What else could we do?
Water, take water.
They were doing water, they had that lot of care, it was cold, next to it, we got it there.
Where was that playground equipment though?
I have no idea.
I'll be sure, Calway.
We built stations, we built nothing.
It may be.
Any of those exercise stations we built?
They don't need to be on that.
Well, what are some of that, who's saying who's there and who's saying who's back, and I guess.
It's, it's.
It's well.
We need to, this gets, gets there.
Definitely, I appreciate it.
Again, it's scheduled. All in favor, motion say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Appreciate you, tell me.
Yeah, later. Thanks for your patience.
Thank y'all.
Change order, everything, I just got a copy of that, ready.
I think government paving for, we had to get paved for the asphalt plan to close down in December, and this is almost the last change order for that little Tennessee, R T J, I have one more, close out, January, we're gonna hope to bring to you which is a continuation meeting, finishes up as far as our constellations security is ready, and so. Well, there, there are deductions as well as additions to it, I don't have the final analysis, we have some deductions and some additions.
So.
We will end up in the final analysis, it's black and in the black. Without any additional local money coming to it.
No additional funds.
Yeah.
She didn't say it's more than that, most of it is.
We need to do it in progress, so we just actually.
No, I don't think we're improving, though, it's the paving, right?
This is all this change order for.
Twenty thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars. We can get that sales tax back, or?
Sure.
Yeah.
We have any materials we want to record, and if we got a sales tax or information, we'll take it away.
And then we'll know.
Did somebody say the motion?
I said, it was nobody, you know.
Good motion, about three hundred eighty, second, I mean. Any discussion?
Has Blackfire done the work?
Yes.
Did he, was he satisfied?
I'll have to check personally, but if that's signed off by the engineers, I'll, I'll leave that up to you.
Oh, well, then, yes. If we see it, we're fine. Don't worry about that.
The hell it plays, dude.
There's nobody following over.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we have another change order, number two of the Swiss Colony area water system.
This is a water project, it's on in Swiss Colony, operate, that area over there, which is additional grant money to do that. The grid, the background, as you know, that the, the original contract calls for the town to provide water meters, and it's being reversed for them, and they didn't want to do that, and so, or to replace those water meters, we felt like the best way to do is have the contractor go ahead and do it. The county's having all the grant funds, and with the county, just pay the contractor directly, put these meter handles up, have to go through the town, so that. So that's, that's a pretty well, what the fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars is to purchase and install fifty water meters. And they have a little bit, three weeks for the project, but the project's going very well, we're having a little progress meeting every two weeks, or sort of once a month, and they're a little bit ahead of schedule.
They work, they, 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 we're done.
But we need to, we need to have the annual approval, so we go ahead and afford these meters, have put in by the contractor, who's on the job, instead of have the town put in.
So make motion to that pay.
We do. No, we won't pay for it, we're not paying for anything, because this is all grant funded, and the county's actually administrative project, let the contract, contract, contract handle the progress meetings, and we're doing it all, all those without, without. This job, this will be finished here, this spring or this fall.
We have no choice, we just, we all have places where my, I'm just about these, they're gonna repeat all the business.
So I make the motion that we approve the change order for the work. Motion in second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If it passes, gentlemen, we got the consent agenda.
One more item, item eight, ten, walk through.
Oh, sorry, yeah, okay, okay. If you'd like to bring the town of Franklin. Jack or Kes.
Yes, you do, I passed out a copy of the interlocal agreement to each of you. Generally, in a nutshell, this is some IT type equipment. The county has in place what's referred to as a VPN or a virtual private network that it utilizes in connection with its CAD mobile server. In a nutshell, it's a, it's a security feature. It had, the county has the capacity to, to allow for the town of Franklin to run its traffic through that VPN. Town of Franklin is in the process of acquiring similar equipment for what is used by the county, and this is an opportunity for the town to save, I think, roughly twenty-nine, twenty-eight thousand dollars, something along that line. twenty-eight thousand dollars, something along that line, by being able to run through the county's VPN instead of having to come up with their own. There is actually some benefit, we are advised by IP to the county, if it's being done this way. Right now, there are some calls that come in to the county, and information has to be given by an operator in, in nine-one-one office at...
Yeah, this, this basically goes to the police department, present to the police department, they have access to the, you can dispatch, which basically, and Andy Muncy's here can fill any technical details that we need to.
Good.
That, that basically allows them to have access to the same information that we get in nine-one-one for mercy calls that are directed toward the town Franklin Police Department. Is that, is that...
Yes, sir. There's benefits cut to both ladies, along the court of, the town Franklin saves some money, the county hopes to save some time of its operators, is that correct?
Yeah, they got access to information, like monitor, speak to them over the telephone.
Any motion? Say approved.
Say.
Discussion second. A, any discussion? All the favor say aye. Aye to both. Motion passes. Consent agenda, these are items that are routine, typically enacted by one motion, no separate discussion needed. Gentlemen, if any of you would like to remove any item, minutes, pledge amendment, actions, discussions every week, we'll make that suggestion, I'll remove that. If not, a motion to approve the synergy in the review.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like most to approve.
Say. Motion in the second, any discussion? All the favor say aye. Aye to both. Motion passes. We've got some, one of those ETG represented, to town Franklin, on behalf of the town board, Derek Roldan has requested your commission to reappoint Dave Jones to the planning board for a three-year term as representative of extra territorial jurisdiction. So the representation is Dave Jones.
Of course, the road really have to live in that term jurisdiction, and don't apologize, and that act normally, so I would make the motion to approve.
We have motion in the second. I think that's second, please simultaneously, but I prefer Mr. Haven. It's fine. To approve Dave Jones, in discussion on day. All the favor say aye. Aye to both. That motion passes. You have, gentlemen, you have attachments there about representatives, pointing to the library board, business liaison, Mr. Chairman, Matt and talking Karen Wallace, this, they've already taken a real active board, and, and she recommended these folks highly. I certainly have no objection, so with that, I recommend, I support Ms. Wallace's recommendation, please pick the board, the circle, the library. That's my... The motion in the second, any discussion on that? Here you go, all the favor say aye. Aye to both. That motion passes. We have nursing and adult care home with community advisory...
No discussion necessary, I'm, I'm making motion, I put George to cry, I'm going forward.
Second, twenty seconds. Okay, we have motion by Field, second by Haven, I'm sorry, by Mr. Haven, if there would be probably be reported in discussion. All the favor say aye. Aye to both.
And speaking of George to cry, just twenty seconds, gentlemen. I mean, this lady's still adult, she's still very active in the middle of, uh, it's sort of a late, it's a long late...
She's ninety, ninety-nine. Nine, okay. We need to go into closed session, and I'd recommend that, let me bring this up, at the end, we, when the discussion came about the pay study, we asked for county manager to set up a meeting with the company that did that, so we could directly ask questions, we sit with questions, et cetera, et cetera. Mr. Bill has mentioned me a moment ago, he has to be in Raleigh that evening for being...
Now, that weekend, well, I won't put a bird on that body else.
I'll just ask, we'll do it that day, because our plan was good, we did the meeting earlier, everybody meets earlier on that day.
Later morning. If we could, if we get up here in the morning.
If I may, let me just talk to board, I've been trying to text Mr. Anzavita to find out when he could be here. He tells me that he has to be in York County until eleven-thirty, he hopes he could be here by three-thirty or four.
And what day is this?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
So just bring him on. I'll miss West Rappel, we'll be the...
Bring him in here, break the time, I mean, yeah, time is still worth.
Monday.
We're up front, see him.
Now, this guy's gotta be along.
Oh.
Morning or night? I don't be there, I don't be there that evening.
That's okay, I didn't know nothing about the state until I come out of the agenda. But I know the daily, so I might, got that switched against.
Do you want it recorded?
No. I'll send him a little square to take in for later.
What square to draw, do you, do you want to meet, go ahead and meet on the eighteenth and do that with Phil's efforts?
I wouldn't think that, maybe, I think, if you have a nation, I'd change it, so to... If I can make some different arrangements, we could, that's, don't, don't let me get hit on too much. Everybody got, for all, everybody gives it.
All we got is two minutes.
Yeah. You might lend that to you, just, you need to work it together.
All right, let's do it, let me pour, five, six, six.
We're still doing the six, too.
Yeah, let me use the three with the six.
I work, I work nine o'clock.
Yeah, I'm working.
See your shoes.
Different, that work, a different kind of person.
Yeah, all right, all right. We, we've got a meeting, a closed session, the question for the state purpose, I do not anticipate any action coming out of this closed session.
Are you kidding? That's all the reason why I'm here.
You're making a friend.
You're going to discuss...
Tommy, is your, is your, is your... Anything we like, man?
We, we state purposes for going into closed session, for attorney-client privilege, and to discuss matters relating to location and expansion, industry, drug businesses, public bodies, including agreement of attempted listed economics, development, etc.
Read in your seat. All right, gentlemen, motion going closed session? Motion, second. All the favor, aye. Aye.